Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Madera City Council. Tonight is Wednesday, August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. It is now six P. M. This meeting is called to order. The council chambers will be open to the public. This meeting will also be available for public viewing and participation through Zoom. Members of the public may also observe the live stream meeting on the city's website at Members of the public may comment on the agenda items at the meeting or remotely through an electronic meeting via phone by dialing six six nine nine zero zero six eight three three. Enter ID eight forty-two seventy nineteen eight nine six zero hashtag. Comments will also be accepted via email at citycouncilpubliccomment@madera.gov or by regular mail at two oh five West Fourth Street, Madera, California, nine three six three seven. Alicia, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Protem Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Gallegos.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Montes.
Here.
Councilmember Mejia.
Here.
And Councilmember Villegas.
I'm here.
Thank you very much, Alicia. Would you please stand for the invocation led tonight by Mayor Protem Anita Evans?
Precious Lord, take my hand. Lead me on. Let me stand. Gracious Father, thank you for this day, Lord. Thank you for watching over each and every one of us, Father, that has entered this room, that encompasses us in the city. Protect our council, our staff, this country. Father, we come to you now asking that you continue to hold us close, directing our path, giving us leading, leading, leading and guidance, Father God. Thank you, Lord. Thank you for the people that are here. Thank you for the love that you offer to each and every one of us. Direct our paths, Lord. Take our feet and make them do as you would have us to do, Father God. Father, we love you and we thank you. I ask that you remove self out of this move meeting and allow you to speak through each and every one of us in your mighty name, Father God, worshiping your son, giving him honor, glory, and praise, in the mighty name of Jesus, Father, we pray. Christ Jesus, amen.
The pledge of allegiance will be led tonight by Attorney, City Attorney Hilda Montal.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with a justus for all.
Thank you very much for that. We will now move on to the approval of the agenda. Alicia, do we have a late distribution?
Yes, Mayor. Pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five seven point five, members of the public are advised that less than seventy-two hours prior to the evening's meeting, item A one, the city's fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three proposed budget was distributed to the council and posted on the city's website after the agenda packet was posted. Members of the public wishing to view or obtain a copy of this item may do so by visiting the City of Madera Meeting and Agenda page located on the city's website. Copies of this item are also available at the podium.
I will now ask my colleagues if there are any changes or additions to the agenda. Seeing none, I will ask for a motion.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented by Councilmember Montes, second by Councilmember Villegas. Alicia, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gallegos.
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Montes.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Mejia.
Yes.
Councilmember Villegas.
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to public comment. The first fifteen minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but are not required to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold a comment until that item is called. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is opened. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusion should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comments at this time. Do we have any public comment from the members? Please stand and come to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers.
You could speak into the mic, please.
Good evening. My name is Alicia Conley. I'm with the Art Fresno Madera Counties. I am the person-centered advocate there, and I am here today. My subject is adult changing tables.
So if you, it is a public comment that you wish to make, and if you could keep it to three minutes?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
So again, my name is Alicia Conley. I'm with the Fresno Madera Counties, and we are, we service individuals that are development disabled and intellectually disabled. And I'm here today regarding adult changing tables because McNilly Park is being remodeled, and it's a park that's close to our center. We have over forty individuals that could utilize access to the public park, and so I'm here on behalf of them to bring up the subject of adult changing tables. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I am C.C. Gallegos, a resident of the city of Madera, and I'm just here on behalf of a committee that got together, and I looked at our city ordinance on naming a park. We have a park that's now in engineering that we're deciding what we're going to do on a playground for it and, and essentials that are going to be put in the park. We have a resident that's a longtime resident in the city of Madera that has done a remarkable impact in this community with adults, children, and our youth. And so I'm here tonight with several individuals that he has helped us with our mayor's pair breakfast. He has helped us with several community buildings that are here, not only for the city but for the county. He has made an impact on our youth that you see standing behind me that are now young professionals that are making impacts in our community to this day. So I have other people that want to speak. I have three minutes, and I just want to tell you that we here at the committee would like to make the, name the Olive and Knox Park Talbert Park after, in honor of Jim Talbert. Thank you.
Is this under, under the same item as, okay?
Yes, sir. All right. Good evening, good evening, Madera residents, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Andrew Martinez, resident at five two one Main Berry Drive. Today I have the honor to talk about an exceptional person and why I think our new park on Olive and Knox should be named Talbert Park. When asked to speak a little about Jim and how he impacted my life, I began to think, and I soon realized all of the ways that he helped me. But I didn't really think about all of the ways he's really impacted all of us. And I'll give you guys a few examples here. So as a kid, I used to walk every day to MLK, and I would walk along a canal on Clinton Avenue. That canal has since been covered and changed to a walking trail under the direction of Jim Talbert while he worked for the Redevelopment Agency. My first home was a RDA home over on Kofax Drive. Jim was the director of RDA at the time. That home put me in a favorable position of equity. I now own a home off of Sunset. Those homes were built by Berry Construction in the nineteen seventies by Jim, who was the VP there at the time as well. Later, Jim hired me at the Redevelopment Agency. While there, he was one of my great mentors. I had no idea all the ways that RDA improved our community. After years, after a few years of working there, Jim asked what my goals were. I laid out my goals to him and told him how, I laid out my goals to him, and he told me that a college degree would help me obtain my goals a lot easier. During every evaluation, every year, he would ask me, have you enrolled in school yet? And I'd always respond, no. After a few years of him asking, I finally decided to just start one class. That led me to graduate from Madera Community College and eventually receive my degree from Fresno Pacific University. Jim was the Director of Economic Commission, Director of Redevelopment, Vice President at Berry Construction. He was a coach, a friend, a father, a mentor, a visionary, but most important, he was a true Maderan. The way I see it, we shop at stores, we work at factories, we live in homes, we're serviced by departments in Madera, drive down streets, walk down sidewalks, all in some way touched by Jim Talbert. Talbert Park would be a place where kids in Madera could go, play, in a way that we could show our gratitude for all Jim has done for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I wanted to put my two cents and talk about how Jim Talbert impacted my life as well. So Jim's been an advocate for the city of Madera, all city of Madera for a long time, but he has been a catalyst for a lot of investment with capital improvements and programs on the, on the east side of town. And he accomplished this by not only bringing ideas to the table, but empowering people and getting people involved in the community. He's been successful in developing people, getting them to engage with community, with projects throughout the community. So I first met Jim here at the city of Madera in the Finance Department. He would usually come around budget time, and he'd raise a little hell about count balances, collection rates, and other budget-related items. He didn't always win his battles, but he always fought well. So naturally, I was, I was drawn to him and intrigued. I wanted to know what, what made him tick, because too often we have people who don't care either way. They come in, they put in their eight, they clock out. So when an opportunity came up to, to work for him, I, I applied for the position and I transferred. He did hire Andrew before me, so just a little bit of rivalry there. But professionally, that was probably one of the best decisions that I've made in my life. Jim, like Andrew said, Jim was a true mentor. He routinely took us out of our comfort zone and put us in situations where we had to develop new skills, new habits, just to make sure that we were getting things done. But most importantly, Jim had really high expectations of us, and that rubbed off on us. We had to develop higher expectations of ourselves. And that's what I did. I started imposing those high expectations on myself and started believing, I can do this, I can do that, or be that. That's partly why I'm here on council today. But one of the bigger projects that, that I worked on with, with Jim is after our team on code enforcement came across a very, very dilapidated occupied home, didn't have any windows, had a collapsed ceiling, collapsed roof, sewage flowing into the river. Jim tasked me with creating a rental housing ordinance so that we never come across situations like that. This is an occupied home that nobody ever made a complaint on. So I started working on that proactive rental housing inspection program. And the project took about a year. During that time, we had several meetings with interested parties, business owners and tenant advocates. We took input from all sides, moved forward with what we thought was the most appropriate ordinance. We took a meeting at council during workshops and public hearings, but ultimately we had a unanimous yes vote, and this is as a staff member. So I learned a lot from that experience. Most importantly, though, I learned that I could have a positive impact on my community. And after his retirement, Jim still stays involved with the community. He is, he's graciously helping us out with our housing authority. He did curse at me when I asked him to help us out, but I think he did it in, he was good about it. He just wanted to make sure that I understood, understood him thoroughly. But for everything that he's done in the community, all the lives that he's impacted, I think this would be a great honor for us to name all the park after him. Thank you.
Is there any public comment at this time? Alicia, do we have any written or?
We have someone on Zoom with their hand raised, Juliana Franco.
Hello, my name is Juliana Franco, and I'm just speaking on the previous comment in regards to naming the park under Jim Talbert, Talbert Park. Like I said, my name is Juliana Franco, nacida in Mexico, and I too was a staff member at the city of Madera, worked underneath Jim Talbert. And the reason why I think we all talk about the potential that we all have and the great work that Jim has poured into us is because since we started working for him, his love and passion for the east side of Madera was unlike anybody else. He would drive around the city, look for ways of how we could improve our community, and he would always say, Juliana, you know, on the east side, there's so much human potential capital that we have yet to untap. You know, those women that are walking their babies to school, I'm sure they didn't leave their country just to be here, not active citizens. What can we do to help them? And I remember as being a staff member, he gave me so much opportunity to grow, not only in my position, but to grow in the community. How can we service them? And so if you were to be in the east side and you were to be doing a neighborhood watch, everybody knows Jim Talbert. He was there early in the morning. He'd go to the neighborhood watch. People know who he is, and whether there would be a language barrier, the people knew that he wanted to help. And so when people would say, why the east side? Because that was his heart. His heart has always been on the east side, always been on the opportunity that is available. And so when, you know, the committee came up and I, it was a no-brainer, Jim has been so influential in my life, just like Andrew, you know, we've all finished school. He would always sit down during our annual review and say, what's next? This isn't all what's next. And he would always push us to strive more, not so that we could, it would just be for our family, but what could we do for our community? And I think because of him, so many of us are so actively engaged in the community. And I think it would be just a great honor for someone who has been instrumental in so many of our lives that we would just name a park after him. And so if you know Jim Talbert, you know that he is a big sports fanatic. I think that this would be just a great tribute to someone who has poured so much, not only to our community, to our young professionals, and of course, to his beloved Buggy Brigade. So that is my comment on that. So thank you.
Thank you. Sarah, I believe you have a brief comment on the Public Health. Sarah Boss.
Good evening. Good to be with you tonight. Just a quick update on COVID nineteen. Our case rate is at twenty-eight point six. We are on the downward slope of a surge that started back in May. It's the second Omicron, well, it went from the second Omicron variant into the third and the fourth. But the first Omicron surge was, was really, really tall, really fast, and this one has been more flat. So we know that there has been immunity to this new variant that has accumulated, and it has caused us to be able to weather this surge much more effectively than we have in the past. So that is due to, of course, both vaccination and past infection. There were times in which our hospitals were close to being overwhelmed, but fortunately they were able to, to weather this surge. We do have vaccination available now for all ages and encourage people, of course, to consider being vaccinated. Right now, the, the core message of Department of Public Health is that individuals should do two things to protect themselves, their family members, and the people around them in the community. And the first is to assess the risk of any activity, as well as the risk of your own health, the people that you're going to be interacting with, especially your household members, as you make plans, because COVID is definitely still with us, and it looks like will continue to be with us. So there's information on our website about how to assess that risk, but we all know some of the high-risk situations, crowded areas where distancing isn't possible, and majority of people are not masking or may not be vaccinated. And the second thing is basically to, once you've assessed that risk, to prepare. So maybe you wake up in the morning and you've got some symptoms, and so it's important to act responsibly and make sure that you are not exposing other people. The first thing you can do is test at home. You can always schedule an appointment to test at our OptumServe site using the LHI.care website. You can also go to our Madera County website for that information. And wear an N ninety-five mask if you must go out and you don't have a test result yet or you don't have a home test, because that will both protect you but protect others. And so if you are at high risk and you're going into a situation where there's going to be lots of people, you don't know what you might be exposed to, an N ninety-five will really be helpful. Of course, we want people to get vaccinated and boosted if they are not, to, of course, raise our immunity across our community. But really, people have the tools now. And at all of our test sites and vaccination sites, Public Health is providing packets for people to be able to act responsibly after they, they've assessed their risks. That includes home tests as well as N ninety-five masks. So we encourage people to take advantage of those free resources. Even if you don't have any symptoms right now, grab a packet, have it at home, maybe two, so that your family is prepared to be able to act responsibly to protect you and others. I'm available for any questions. I don't know if that's possible during public comment.
No, actually, the public comment, we will not be commenting. We, we actually, we talked about giving you time during public comment to give an update because we were late on putting it on tonight's agenda, but thank you very much, and you're certainly welcome to come at our next city council meeting so that we could have your, again, your presentation and public comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Happy to join you next time.
All right. Thank you. Alicia, do we have any written public comment or on Zoom otherwise?
We have no written public comment. Mayor, Mark, do we have any callers on Zoom?
Yes, we have one on Zoom. Caller with the last four digits, two six six five, please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Cali Salimis. I am attending the Art of Fresno Madera County. And Mayor, I am thankful to get this opportunity to address the changing tables. I just want to comment, I've been, been in the program for fifteen, sixteen years, and these fifteen, sixteen years have been seeing no changes on, on public rest, on public parks or, or national, like beaches or different places, because they never thought about our individuals in a wheelchair. Those individuals are still part of our community, are still part of our, our life, and we think they're still, they need to be included in every day like, like every other citizen in the country. And I feel like, if, I don't know if you know this, only two changing tables in this, in the whole state of California, they're available only in Alajex. But if you do this, putting the changing tables in this park, and I feel you're gonna be the first, only of Madera putting an example for the rest of the state of California. That's all my comment for today.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further public comment, I will close public comment. There are no written communications, and we have some presentations. Mr. Winslow, would you please step forward? Hello, how are you?
Pretty good.
Good to see you. Welcome to the people's house. I have a proclamation for Old Timers Week that I will be reading to you. This is from the City of Madera Office of the Mayor proclamation for Old Timers Week. Whereas the ninety-first anniversary of Old Timers Day will be celebrated in Madera on Saturday, September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, and whereas it has long, long been the tradition to honor citizens who have been residents of the city or county of fifty years or more, with week-long activities, a parade down Yosemite Avenue, and a community-wide Day in the Park celebration on Saturday. And whereas it is fitting to recognize the contributions made by Madera's old timers at the creation and development of the city and county of Madera. This is not a reflection on you, brother, okay? By the way, I'm just reading the script. And therefore be resolved that I Santos Garcia, Mayor of the City of Madera, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim September twenty twenty-fourth, twenty through twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two as Old Timers Week in Madera, and take great pleasure in honoring the old timers of our city and county in conveying our sincere gratitude and appreciation for, and appreciation for their dedication and efforts and contributions to help and to shape our local history. Signed the seventeenth day of August, two thousand twenty-two.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. And, and I am Bob Winslow, and I'm glad to be here tonight. It's, I don't know when it was, when I was last here. It's been a few years, probably due to COVID and my own situation and what have you, so I'm glad to be back here to accept proclamation on behalf of the Madera Historical Society, of which, while I go back and forth between my house in Fresno and, and other residents I have near Folsom, I'm still involved with the Historical Society on the board, actually, still. So glad to still be involved in, in what have you. And this afternoon, I was set in on a meeting in the county building regarding the, the employee lunch, and I had been involved in that for lots of years, and they have a pretty good committee going now, so they're working on that. You know, that includes not only the county employees but city also. So I hope you all, you know, will be able to attend that. And, and then there's the, the costume contest, the old timers costume contest. And the city has been very good in past years. They, you know, won the contest and all that kind of stuff. And the county, I think they've maybe done a little better the last few years. Hopefully that there'll be a good spirited competition again this year, and, and that we'll have a great Old Timers Day activities, and it'll be, you know, I'm glad this continuing on. It's been, how, how many years did we have there? Ninety-six or something? Yeah, ninety-one. So, so yeah, it's good to keep that activity going on. And I'm, again, I'm happy to be here and happy to accept this, and hope everybody can come out and see a good parade and have a, a great day and have a lot of fun that day. hope everybody can come out and see a good parade and have a a great day and have a lot of fun that day. And thank you very much. Appreciate it all. Appreciate everyone. Thank you so much.
Does that make it? There you go. Come on up. Mr. Thurman, Mark, come on up. And Michael. Por favor. Yeah, yeah, you too, brother. You're part of this. You're the one that organized it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
He's shy.
I don't know why.
Do a great job. As for the last two years, I've been involved with their backpack giveaway and bicycle giveaway in City of Madera. And I've been honored to be out there, and you should see the kids' faces when they receive a free backpack with school supplies in it and a bicycle. The bicycle will be done sometime in December. But I, we just wanted to acknowledge them for their their providing those. This is from the City of Madera and the City Council. Certificate of recognition presented to back Mr. Thurman and Mitchell from in recognition of their generous donation of 400 backpacks. That was what, two weeks ago? To our community at the 2022 Madera Ford's Annual Backpack Giveaway. Presented this 17th day of August, 2022, Santos Garcia, Mayor of the City of Madera.
Hi, I'm Mark Thurman, owner of Sierra Valley Almonds. Mitchell got me involved in this, so I don't know, three or four years ago. First time we did some bicycles up in Oakhurst, and we've done that ever since. And we've been involved in Lock's not only a good friend but also partner in Sierra Valley Hole in Our Huller. Anyway, we've been in Madera for eight or nine years. We've been around 17 years. Started in Kerman. We employ 110 people here in the city and county of Madera and another 50 out in our other processing plant on the west side of Fresno County. But easy for me, I write a check. The guy that 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 has done and organizes thing is Mitchell. And to get his crew, I think last year he did 300 bicycles at Christmas. I think he'll do it on December the 17th. I think this year you're shooting for 400 or whatever. I'll let you talk about that. But to get his crew to come down there, they come in boxes, they are all not assembled. And to get a crew for weekends, several weekends, to put put these bikes together. All the credit goes to Mitchell. We just are able to come here tonight and talk about it. But I'm proud of this guy, and this guy drives the the whole program.
I I was raised by a single mother, so I know kind of how hard it is. So it's, you know, I couldn't do it without Locke, without Mark, and many other people that that donate. I have a lot of people that'll that'll buy bicycles and they'll ship them to the dealership to help us out. The backpacks, we purchased all the backpacks from a woman-owned company. I like doing business with her because it's a woman-owned company. Back East, they they ship us everything, and then Locke's daughters and his wife come in, and we we pack them with school supplies. And then, like Mark was saying, to see these kids, the expression and the appreciation. You know, like Monday, when I was driving to work, it warms your heart because you see these kids walking around with our backpacks. You know, the lime green backpack, the black and purple, black and pink backpacks. It just, you know. So it just, anything we can do to give back, you know, some of us are fortunate that, you know, like Mark said, some of us can write a check and do what we want for our children, but some people can't. So it's just, you know, what, you know, the little bit we can do to make their life a little bit better, you know, maybe they'll remember that, and when they become successful, they'll remember, you know. I remember that dealership that helped me when I was a kid. I'm gonna do the same. So that's how I look at it.
Well, I'd like to thank the mayor first of all for giving us a recognition on this. We just do a little bit back for the community. I mean, it's not a lot. We try to do all we can. And we also want to thank the community for supporting the dealership and, you know, supporting the industry here locally. So thank you.
Mayor Garcia, can I make a comment before we start? Continue?
Sure.
Thank you. Gentlemen, I just wanted to say we thank you on behalf of the city. But I'm also a Madera Unified School District teacher. So on behalf of Madera Unified, we thank you for those backpacks for our kids. I see it firsthand. I'm in the trenches. So thank you again. Perfect. Thank you. Fantastic. Thank you. Fantastic. Thank you.
All right. Into, we will now move on to introductions, which we have none, I believe. Okay, we will now move to item A, which is a workshop. Item A1 is a workshop on the annual operating budget and capital improvement program for fiscal year 2022 and 2023. This presentation, I believe, is by Kingsley.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Thank you for the opportunity again to present to you a budget workshop. This is the second budget workshop. We had one two weeks ago. And today, basically, we're going to continue, repeat some of the stuff that we talked about the last time, and then dig into some of the other details of the budget. And precisely, if I can share my screen. Can you see my screen?
Yes. You might need to enlarge it, though.
Ah, yes. I'll put it on my presentation. Is that better?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. What's over this is. Interesting. Okay, on the agenda tonight, basically, there is no formal action. Again, this is a workshop. And the plan, of course, is to come back, I believe, August 24 in a special meeting, and that's when we'll be asking for council to formally adopt the fiscal year 2223 budget. We do have the budget book available. It's one of the distributed items. And I just wanted to point out in the budget book that we distributed to you, we have been reviewing, and we found an error. And I'd like to just point out that it goes from page, I believe, page 277 in the budget book to page 289. And those are all the enterprise, actually, the internal service funds. The fleet, maintenance, and fleet multiple, and computer acquisition and maintenance. What we have in the budget book that is distributed is information from last year. We have since updated that information. And after the beginning, we're going to inside the right updated pages in the book as well as the version that is put online. So I just wanted to point that out. As you read the book, and you find that where on those pages, it still has 2021. And last week, excuse me, like last council meeting, we talked about the budget key assumptions on the revenue projections and expenditure projections. I'm going to repeat those as we go through the slides, but very quickly. Next, we'll look at the budget from a citywide perspective, looking at the revenue citywide as well as expenditures. And then we, you know, touch upon the basic, you know, highlights of the budget. We'll focus on general fund. General fund is really the the biggest fund of the city. That's where everything runs through. We'll look at the revenue expenditures, on expenditures, and we'll also touch on the other funds, all the internal service funds, the enterprise funds, which will include water, sewer, solid waste. And we'll also touch upon the special revenue funds. And in addition, we'll highlight some of the new requests that is being asked in the proposed budget. And with that, we can get into the assumptions. We touched upon the economic climate last week. Nothing has changed. I keep saying last week, last council meeting, excuse me. Nothing has changed in the past two weeks. You know, inflation is still a concern. The pandemic is waning, but the impact is still there. And consumer confidence is still a concern. People are not buying and purchasing as much as everybody will hope to because that actually drives the sales tax revenue, which is the biggest source of revenue that the city has. And on the revenue side, like you said, sales tax is based on our consultants estimate. Sales tax is the big, single, largest source of revenue for the city of Madera. And we have consultants that monitor sales tax regularly. And the estimates that we included in the budget includes, actually, is from the recommendations from the consultants. Property tax, basically, property tax is stable. We don't know what it's going to do, but what we have done with the budget is basically assume that at a minimum that we will have a 2% increase consistent with Proposition 13 in California. So we made that adjustment, 2% increase over last year's budget. And then we looked at our various special revenues, and depending on what they are, we adjusted them 2% here and 3% at some places. Utility rates, which are basically water, sewer, solid waste. Those are based on the rich study that was recently done, and also the rates that were canceled or the brothers approved following proc 18 process. And I went to council, I believe, like four meetings ago. And so we basically inputted those approved rates in our estimates for the budget. On the expenditure side, all the salaries and benefits are based on whatever was negotiated with the employee groups. And then the increases in healthcare premiums and employees' stipends. Those are the are paid out of city reserves consistent with the council direction from last year. Healthcare cost that's proposed and consistent with market inflation and the cost that is proposed by the vendors. The timing cost are based on CalPERS actual report. Actually, we get an actual report every year. And in that report, it clearly delineates all the actual current costs and the funded liability confidence. So basically, we pick out the numbers out of that report from CalPERS. And probably was on the material side and cost of doing business, gas and all that kind of stuff. We looked at the historical trend, and basically, in some places, we adjusted up the expenditure estimates by 4% to account for some of that inflation. In terms of gas costs, fuel and all of that stuff, 4% may not be enough. But, you know, we've made some adjustments, and we can come back at the middle of the year when we actually experience what's going on. And we can come to council for additional adjustments or adjust it downward or upward. Now, we get into the numbers, and I know last week, we received a comment that we need to show some graphs. And we do have some graphs, but, you know, I'm not sure how you talk about finance without talking about numbers. But I do have graphs that basically shows these numbers in a pictural way that folks that are more comfortable with that can can follow. What you're looking at here is citywide revenue. And it, you know, it goes in by category, taxes, licenses, mortgages. You can see that on the left-hand side here. And what we have also done is look at previous years, going from 2018, 19 to 1920, actual 2021. What we budgeted last year, 2122, what we are projecting to end the fiscal year that ended 630, 2022. And then based on all of that, and and what we are hearing from our consultants, what we're estimating on taxes, and this taxes here includes both sales tax, property tax, property tax in lieu of vehicle license, and all of those are all put together. And you look at that number here, I want to highlight that taxes, sales tax, property tax, property tax in lieu. It's about $35 million for city of Madera. And for general fund, that's like 60% of the general fund they look, but a significant chunk of overall city revenue budget. And the other thing I wanted to highlight on this chart, it's interest income. Interest income, as you can see, interest before the COVID time and the change. The economy, we were getting about a million and a half at the bottom of it last year with the low interest rates. It was about 630. We're starting to see the Fed's rates, rates a little bit. And I think there's on the portfolio, the way it's all laid out right now, we're estimating that the city probably will receive in aggregate about $750,000 from interest and money that we have on hand and invested. So total revenue here is about $115 million. This excludes, this is, as we pointed out here, this excludes the agency and fiduciary funds. And the fiduciary funds, we have about $6 million in fiduciary fund that is attributable to the successor agency. And that's sort of money in, money out. So it's not included in this overall city citywide revenue estimate. The same information in the graphic, in a graph. Basically, you know, following the same, you know, totals that we have, the $115 million and the components of it. The general fund is about, general fund revenue is about 51 million. Enterprise funds about 41. And then the tunnel service funds about $5.6 million and special revenue about $18 million, making that total of the $115 million. And if you can follow the graph here, you can see here, it was increasing a little bit. Then we're getting to a deep, and here, we're starting to be a little bit, I would say, cautiously optimistic. But nonetheless, optimistic that our things are beginning to change, but getting a little bit more revenue from all sources. Now, this is on the expenditure side. Again, it's basically laid out the same way we looked at our several years, our prior years, all the actual for three years. What was budgeted in the What was budgeted in the last year, what we're projecting, how we're going to end the fiscal year. And then what we're proposing for the budget year that we're, that's under consideration here. Salaries and benefits, that's the biggest chunk and that's not, that's nothing unusual. You know, running a city is a person, man, ten cities, our business, we don't sell widgets, we're just offering services. So salary and benefits are one of the biggest components. And then materials and supplies to be able to deliver the services that we offer as a city. And then capital outlay here, basically, you know, all the necessary capital that makes the city functional. We are estimating a total of about a hundred and nine million dollars in proposed expenditures for the fiscal year. And again, showing it in a graphic form. You can see the trend as well, you know, it's kind of increasing here a little bit. And then at the bottom of there, before then COVID, we're starting to sort of get back into it. And we're proposing here about a hundred and nine point four million dollars in total expenditures for the fiscal year. Again, this is basically presenting the same information in a different cast, a little differently. On the left hand side here, you see the projected revenue. Again, we saw that in the graph, general fund, enterprise funds, special revenue, tunnel service funds for a total of a hundred and fifteen. And then here, on this line, the proposed expenditures are total a hundred and nine, it's basically the same information that we saw in the graph. I'll be just showing it a little differently here by fund. And then the graph here is also sort of the citywide view of it, you know, looking at it again by fund. The previous chart in sort of the graphic format, you know, if you look at it general fund here, the green line, the green bar is the revenue, the blue one is the expenditure. So a little bit of revenue over expenditures and, you know, general fund that you can see on another slide too, it's about nine hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars to the good. Enterprise fund as well, we are generating more revenue than we're spending. Special revenue, the same thing. The tunnel service funds, of course, is money, they are money in, money out, so they're kind of even. And overall, in this bar here, you know, again, the green bar is the revenue and the blue bar is the expenditures. And we saw that difference in the previous slide. Hopefully, showing it in a graphic form here helps in terms of, instead of just staring at a bunch of numbers. Okay, and this slide is basically showing the total employees within the city and is calculated by F T E. And F T stands for full-time equivalent, looking at a standard twenty eighty hours of work in a year. So you can see how that is distributed throughout the departments. The total is about two hundred and ninety seven employees, full-time equivalent employees. Public works about sixty three, police a hundred and two, parks about fifty four. And then engineering and finance, twenty, the rest of them, you can see the distribution there. That's no surprise, I mean, city is a service business, as I said earlier. The frontline folks are the police, public works, parks. That's really what makes the city what it is. The rest are the departments here, finance, city manager, human resources, information systems, these are all support functions to enable the frontline folks to do the best they can in servicing the citizens of the city. Now we get into general fund. We have been, we have been looking at the citywide perspective, but then we start to kind of, you know, narrow a little bit and go into general fund. And again, general fund is really the big general operating fund of the city. That's where anything, everything that is not specifically designated for a particular function, all of that flows through the general fund. And general fund total revenue and transfers in, we're estimating about fifty one million dollars for fiscal year twenty two twenty three. On the expenditure side, we're estimating about fifty million dollars, fifty point one million with the net difference to the good of nine hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars. Basically, the general fund is balanced with a little bit of room there. And the one thing I wanted to emphasize here, everything that you see here on both columns here, especially for twenty two twenty three, these are all projections. If everything unfolds the way we have projected, projected it on the revenue side, if all the assumptions, the key assumptions that we went through, if all those materialize, we're able to get revenue, say property tax with a two percent and a little bit of increase. And on the expenditure side, everything unfolds the way we have it teed up. That's what we're estimating that where we're going to end up. This is, this does not necessarily mean cash in the bank at this point, these are all estimates. And that's exactly what a budget is, a plan based on informed and educated estimates. So but the good news again is a balanced budget and you have a little bit of room there for the variations that we know will happen when we close at the end of activities at the end of the fiscal year. Again, we show the same information on the graph. The same information on the chart in the graph format. And on this left, on left side here, we're looking at the revenue, you know, coming in. Well, the blue is the fiscal year twenty one twenty two. What we're projecting to end is the, I guess you could call this, I'm not sure. The name of that column, you know, the gray one here is the proposed line there, so you can see on the revenue side here, on this side are the expenditures. And this is the difference here, the surplus and deficit that I recorded in the funds. And on both, excuse me, on both sides, we want to focus on measure K. Measure K is a standalone source of revenue approved by citizens to support our public safety. For fiscal year twenty two twenty three, what we're projecting here, we're projecting that we're going to receive the total of six point six five million dollars from measure K. And we are budgeting, estimating expenditures at five point one million dollars with about a million point five, a million, one point five million dollars left for measure K. And the expenditures here includes both for police and for fire. The measure K is allocated equally between police and fire. So basically, the expenditures for police, you know, this is what the half of the received revenues, this is the difference here, six ninety two, same thing for fire, a hundred and sixteen. Okay, and measure K, we do have reserve accounts in measure K. And the reserve was created in two thousand eighteen nineteen fiscal year, I believe. And every year, the total is two hundred and sixty divided equally between police and fire. So police gets a hundred and thirty, fire gets a hundred and thirty. And this is how much have been, you know, we've been setting aside through fiscal year twenty one twenty two. And we're proposing to continue to do that in the budget for fiscal year twenty two twenty three, one thirty each. And that would build up their respective balances of seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars each in the measure K reserve account. In addition to that, we also have the measure K fire engine replacement program. We do have some fire engines, several of them have been in operation for several years. And from what I understand, they are getting on their last legs. And we need to have a plan to replace them as, as we can, you know. And over the years, we've also since two thousand seventeen, setting aside some money to be able to buy the replacements fire trucks. If you follow the activities here from two thousand seventeen, it was two hundred thousand dollars a year. Fiscal year twenty twenty, it built up about eight hundred thousand. The first replacement was done within the fiscal year twenty one twenty two. At a cost of about seven hundred and fifty one thousand dollars. That kind of depleted the balance to two forty eight. And we know that the next truck in a few years here, we're going to replace another truck. So part of the proposal in this budget year is to increase that amount into the fire engine replacement program from two hundred thousand to four hundred and ninety. That will enable the city to build up this reserve quicker and be able to afford the next replacement. And they are not getting any cheaper, you know. And I think we have the fire chief here, you know, he can speak to that if you wish. If you have any particular questions about what the outlook is or what they are seeing today in terms of the cost of the the fire trucks. I think fire engine versus fire truck, there is a difference, we're talking about. So anyway, that's the proposal here. I wanted to point this out that we are recommending that council increase that allocation into the replacement program reserve from two hundred thousand to four hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year. And the, this slide again is general fund revenues. Looking at general fund revenues, the various components of it. You know, taxes, resolve this, the first line, there are taxes, all the sales tax, property tax, property tax in lieu, all the taxes, transient occupancy tax, everything amounts to about thirty one point eight million dollars. And thirty one point eight million dollars versus fifty one million dollars in total general fund revenue. That's about sixty percent of your revenue. So it deserves some attention, like repeated to the sales tax by using consultants and also property tax. You have revenue from other sources, licensing apartments, internally generated revenue. Has some fines and profit charges and charges for services and a host of other stuff, small items, you know, within the city structure. But the total, again, if you follow the way this chart is laid out, fiscal year eighteen nineteen twenty twenty one, you see the general fund revenue inclusion over these years. From this year twenty twenty one, our true to budget, it kind of dipped a little bit. But we are projecting that we're going to receive, when all said and done, when we close the book for six thirty twenty two, the revenue will be in the neighborhood of forty seven million dollars. And based on all that information, we're projecting a total of fifty one million for fiscal year twenty two and twenty three. And again, this is just showing the same information in a graphic form, you know, it kind of shows it very well here that by far, the taxes are the mainstay, you know, about over sixty percent of the total general fund revenue. And you can see the other ones, you know, where they're all relative to the taxes. And sales tax, I showed you this slide two weeks ago. Basically, you know, following the trend of sales tax pre-pandemic. The pre-pandemic, pre-pandemic level was at eight million, eight point four. Went to nine point seven and ten point seven, then it started to kind of tail off a little bit. But we're thinking, you know, it came back some. And again, when we close our books for the year ended in June, last June, we think we'll earn about eleven point one million dollars. And sales tax, we're following the consultant's recommendation and estimating twelve, twelve point three million dollars revenue from sales tax. The next group is actually the property tax. And property tax includes both the direct property tax that we get, which is the first, what I'm highlighting here. And then the property tax in lieu of vehicle license fee. That is a replacement revenue that is, you know, from property tax as well. So in total, you can see the trend as well. It's been steady increasing, but not by a huge amount. The annual change is not that huge and that's consistent with what we're seeing. And that's why we are basically adjusting property tax by two percent, which is the minimum increase that is allowed or the maximum, you know, pay provision thirteen. So basically, looking at this chart, I don't think there's any other justification to increase property tax more than two percent for the proposed twenty twenty four budget. Now we come on the expenditure side for general fund specifically now. Again, you know, following the same format, you know, breaking it down by categories. The salaries, materials and all the other components of operations. Salaries and benefits is about twenty four point five million dollars, which is really almost fifty percent of the total general fund expenditures. Again, you know, running a city, that's just consistent with every other city. As, you know, person, cost, salaries and benefits are usually in that range. So there's no surprise there. And then followed by materials that are used to actually provide the services to the citizens. So basically, again, we are proposing a total expenditures of about fifty million dollars in the general fund budget. The same information here shared in the graphic form, you know, that shows again, the salaries and benefits by far the largest, followed by materials and services and then capital outlay and then some of the internal charges that go to the tunnel service funds to pay for the support services. Some of the general fund highlights, it is a balanced budget. You know, when people talk about balanced budget, generally they talk about general fund, not the citywide. So from the general fund perspective, the general operating fund of the city, it is a balanced budget. We have some new requests and additions. There was an adjustment for the fire contract, yeah, that half of that twenty six thousand dollars, that's included in the budget. All the CalPERS increases relating to funded liability and retirement contributions were also accounted for. We are including in the budget two hundred and fifty thousand dollars dedicated for citywide trash and continuing the river cleanup efforts. And there's also another three hundred thousand dollars included in there to begin to accumulate money to do the housing element of the general plan. And I did point out the other one, you know, we're increasing, we're proposing to increase the fire engine replacement fund set aside from two hundred thousand to four hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year. And then we also added another one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for council elections. Now in terms of new positions, you know, several new positions were also added in the budget. Within the police department, there's the police auxiliary services supervisor. Engineering is getting an administrative analyst. Uh, engineering is getting an administrative analyst. Finance is um, getting a payroll specialist. Uh, right now, we have just one person, uh, you know, doing payroll citywide. And uh, that's not a, that's not a, that's a terrible, I mean, um, the guy hardly goes on vacation, and if he does go on vacation, we could have uh, some emergencies on our hands. So it is critical to hire somebody that can um, be a second person within that payroll uh, uh, function. Um, there is a park ma- parks manager that's going to the parks, and then Parks Walker One. Um, uh, that's also um, included. So these are the positions that are incorporated in the proposed budget for the, uh, within the, um, I think most of all of them in the general fund. Now, um, this uh, general fund balance summary. I would need to spend just a couple of minutes here, uh, trying to explain this, I don't have a grab for it, but just bear with me with the numbers. And the first column here, we're talking about general fund, the balance, you know, uh, calculating the balance, and these are all estimates right now. Uh, based on, you know, uh, um, all the numbers that we have estimated um, for the budget. And the first column here, uh, it's what we think, where we think we're going to end the uh, fiscal year, last year, that ended six thirty twenty two. These numbers are based on what we have in our system so far. They are un-audited numbers, they have not been audited yet. Um, the audit is in process, and we're working with the auditors, so they can come in for their field work to audit these numbers. So these numbers here could change. But based on what we have in our um, you know, accounting system right now, this is how the numbers um, shake out. We have about nine point five we're pro- projecting on assigned fund balance. We have um, general fund stabilization reserve of about nine point five. I need to go through the line here, we have uh, the um, police and fire, uh, um, with uh, uh, measure care reserve. We have insurance reserve, best service reserve, health insurance reserve, feature annual stipends, uh, which is consistent with what the council approved. Um, we have a set aside reserve for that. We have some reserve for payable liability, other and other pension employment benefits, um, golf cost capital, and then we have um, you know, the balance in measure K, um, and uh, some other non-spendable items. Now, based on this uh, balance, then all the estimated revenue, you know, um, that we know um, that is included in the proposed budget, you add that in with this column. Then on the expenditure side, you subtract all the estimated expenditures that you're seeing now, that impacts the balance. And you look at all the transfers incoming from other sources into the reserve. And if you follow the line of the other side, you know, I've said, first things are five point seven, approximately five point eight million being transferred in from other sources. There's also four point five, four point four eight, four point five being transferred out. If all of this then unfolds, all of it unfolds the way we have it estimated and projected, we think at the end of the June thirty twenty twenty three, we're going to have on assigned fund balance of approximately seven million dollars. And we've also recalculated um, the general fund stabilization reserve, which is about thirty percent of the total uh, general fund budget. And 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 based on that calculation, uh, we've uh, we increased it, you know, by this amount. And that's the note here, the total inclusion adjustment of like two point five, that about million to meet the stabilization reserve policy. That's a policy and that number, you know, is thirty percent of the total general fund uh, budget. Excluding, you know, measure K, excluding as much as we can identify all the grants, because we don't need to reserve for that, because measure K has its own separate reserves. Yeah, so that's what you see here in total numbers, you know, highlighted here. You know, uh, all the reserve that the city has for contingency, for all of that insurance and all of that stuff, we are projecting close to about thirty nine million dollars at the end of um, uh, six thirty twenty twenty three, uh, uh, um, next year. So that kind of reserve for a city of this size is reasonable, you know, it's not out of this world or anything, it's just um, uh, um, it's it's good policy to have that um, our general fund reserves and 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 the other reserves. Now, we pivot to um, some of the other funds, the internal service funds. And the internal service funds, you know, we group all of them together. This includes all the uh, the computer maintenance, you know, uh, motherboard and all of that. Um, the revenue, um, including transfers that we're projecting in the proposed budget is about five point six million dollars. And the expenditures exactly the same, about five point six million dollars. It basically is money in, money out to pay for the expenses of the internal service firms. So there's really nothing here, you get concerned if there's a deficit which was uh, uh, in uh, last year's budget, but we're projecting that I know we're not going to have a deposit when we close our books, we'll probably break even as well. Um, water, re- revenue and expenses, again, water, we're following the numbers here. Um, it's based on what's approved um, in the last proctu eighteen rate uh, adjustment that was that um, was approved by the boroughs and um, accepted by council. And totally expenditures is about this much projected with um, uh, a difference of about four million dollars. And I'm sure um, all of that will go towards capital work. Um, to fund um, capital requirements of the uh, water enterprise. Uh, on the suicide, basically the same thing, um, the proposed column, uh, uh, column here. Um, total eleven point seven, that's consistent with what's um, in the red study and um, the proctu eighteen study that was approved. Expenditures are about ten point five with about a million three left overall. Uh, solid waste, um, the same thing, um, basically, uh, this is uh, the tenth uh, projecting uh, the based on the new rates that is council approved, um, uh, in the contract with the uh, trash hauler. Um, we have total um, expenses, uh, about six point seven, uh, with um, projected uh, difference of about seven twenty three. Uh, stonewall drain, um, nothing changed with stonewall drain, um, you know, there was no rate adjustment, I don't, I, yeah, I believe, um, um, it did not pass the proctu eighteen process, so the revenue remains relatively the same. And uh, the expenditures are also, you know, they are consistent, um, but two different from the previous years and the difference uh, about ninety three thousand dollars uh, on an annual view of uh, of the operations. Again, again, um, this uh, this item is informational, it's just a workshop, um, you know, giving your council and um, our citizens the opportunity to um, look at the various aspects of the budget, we're not requesting any action from your council tonight. However, we do want to come in uh, next week, on the twenty fourth, to, you know, present you with um, a clean book and um, uh, um, a resolution to uh, formally adopt uh, the fiscal year uh, twenty twenty two, twenty three budget. As it is right now, and as you may recall, we did approve the continuing resolution. So basically, the city's being upgraded based on that um, continuing resolution. Once this is uh, passed next week, it will supplement the continuing resolutions and um, uh, we'll have um, a formal city budget. And with that, um, that's the end of the presentation, and I can answer any questions that you may have.
Ronaldo, do you have anything to add before we move on?
No, I believe the only thing that I'll add is um, um, there are a couple of minor technical um, um, I'll say updates that we had to make that we caught this afternoon. Um, and so this is in keeping with the last three budgets that the city's adopted, where we've had um, um, either a balanced budget or a small surplus of a budget. This year's um, potential surplus obviously looks a lot larger than what we've had in the years in the past. And I think some of that can be attributed specifically to some of our sales tax. Um, is projected to increase in comparison to last year. Uh, the other two items that I think are key to this equation is council um, allocated from previous unassigned fund balances, the healthcare contributions. And so we are picking some of that up uh, of several hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, I believe it's, you know, six hundred and twenty five thousand is the number that I recall. And then also the employee stipends that are every July first of fifteen hundred dollars. So because of that, that that actually has greatly allowed um, um, us the luxury of of having um, um, can budgets that are in the black. And then also in the six budgeted positions that Steph is requesting, two of those are for new parks employee ones. Um, and currently, the city's parks department operates with a large group of part-time employees. Our hope is to convert some of those part-time employees to full-time employees in the budget. And the benefit to that is we'll have full-time employees. Um, obviously, those employees would receive all the benefits of all other city employees. And and hopefully, as we're adding green spaces in our community, as we saw Monday at Home and Park, uh, we have a lot of new subdivisions. And um, as we're adding additional parks and green spaces and landscape areas, we have to do a better job of maintaining those areas. And this is our attempt to try to do just that. And then the other four, um, the other four positions that we're requesting this evening, they're much needed positions. Um, we are not proposing any what I would refer to as phantom positions. So there are no positions that are not allocated money. Uh, the vacant positions um, that are, that the city currently has, those were allocated a percentage throughout the year. So for example, if we're proposing to hire a police officer today, that police officer probably wouldn't start for a couple of months. So those positions were budgeted like that. One of the things we're trying to do is we're trying to do a better job of 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 identifying what their true cost is. And that's what we attempted to do in this budget. As Kingsley indicated, we are closing the books on last year's budget. There's also moving parts, which always happens at the end of the year, making sure that we've paid all of our bills, uh, making sure that we receive all of our invoices from all of our vendors. And sometimes there's some large swings, because as we're calling up our vendor saying, please send us the bill, they have their own accounting that they have to go through. So sometimes at the end of the year, we'll see some significant swings. Um, but that's, that's the reason, especially as you have larger capital projects, for example, the sidewalk projects. Those are expensive, so then we'll see some enormous swings there, but but we feel very good about this budget. Um, we still have some can work to do on last year's budget in terms of the audit. Um, but um, overall, we feel like we're in a very good position. And then also in terms of the Fire Engine Replacement Program, what Chief Watson and I did, we went back, we re-examined how how much we were saving per year for the long-term plas- um, um, compliance for the city. And we feel that we do have to increase the amount of funds that are being allocated to that in order to um, uh, not necessarily to expate, but can the program, as we first initially planned for it, the problem that we've experienced is the the cost of equipment has gone up significantly. And if we would have maintained the existing two hundred thousand dollars, we would have fallen short. And the plan, we would eventually get there at some point, but it would take a lot longer. So with the plan that we have right now, we feel good about it. A year from now, I may be coming back to council and saying, you know what, four hundred and ninety thousand was enough, maybe it's not enough. But again, every year, I think it's our job to recalibrate our efforts to make sure that it reflects true conditions, so we're not falling behind. So with that, Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you. As we said, this is an informational item, no, no action needs to be taken. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on the budget? Uh, Lisa, do we have any members of the public on Zoom or in written form?
We have no written public comment, Mayor Mark.
Uh, no one on Zoom.
Thank you. Any members of the, my colleagues wishing to ask a question or make a comment? Seeing none, I think we'll close this item. Thank you, Kingsley, for that uh, report. Thank you very much for your deep show report, and we'll see you at our next meeting for that, a very same item to close it out possibly. Thank you. Uh, we will now move on to item B, which is our consent calendar. Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item be removed from the consent calendar, and it will be considered separately. Lisa, do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on the consent calendar?
No written public comment, Mayor.
Any members of the public here? Thank you very much, and I'll close with public comment on this item. And I will now have a discussion with my colleagues or a motion. To approve consent.
Second.
Motion to approve the consent calendar. Alicia, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Gaios?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Mejia?
Yes.
Councilmember Vegas?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Uh, we will now move on to item C, public hearings. Item C one is a public hearing to consider the proposed annexation of property within the Vineyard Estates Phase Three A Substation into City of Badera Landscape Maintenance District Zone of Benefit Two Seven B. I believe Mr. Hammett, you have this item? And we can see your screen, Keith.
Keith, you're on mute.
I am unmuted. Can you keep the screen?
You're good now, man. You're good.
Very good. Thank you so much. This particular item is relative to the annexation of the Vineyard Estates Phase Three A into Zone of Benefit Twenty Seven B of the city's Landscape Maintenance District uh, for the fiscal year twenty two, twenty three. And it's not wanting to work for me very well. Uh, anyway, this is part of multiple actions required as part of the approval and ultimate recordation of the improvement agreement and final agreement for that same subdivision. Improvement agree- agreement and final map are approved at the August third council meeting. Uh, recordation of the agreement and map can occur after some of the, this subdivision is annexed into the Community Facilities District, which is a separate item, and also the this particular one, which is uh, Landscape Maintenance District Zone Twenty Seven B. This represents the second and final meeting with regard to the annexation into Zone Twenty Seven B. Uh, pursuant to section two two five five four of the Landscape and Lighting Act, annexation of any parcel into the Zone of Benefit requires both a public hearing as well as a published notice of public hearing. Uh, that that notice was was published in the Badera Tribune. Uh, the public meeting here is a chance for current property owners in each zone of benefit to comment on proposed annexation. Uh, actually, I'd be more specific, this is for members of Twenty Seven B to comment on the uh, proposed annexation. The reason for annexation, new development within the city is subject to annexation due landscape maintenance districts. Assessments are levied to pay for each property's fair share of landscaping maintenance. Properties within this subdivision will be assessed fees at forty eight eighty eight per year, as outlined in the staff report and included in the in, uh, in the upcoming annual engineers' report uh, next year, once the subdivision is accepted. Tonight's action is to convene the public hearing, listen to comments during public hearing prior to council consideration of annexation, and then consider confirmation of the diagram, annual assessments and levies, and acceptance of covenant for landscape maintenance. The recommended action for tonight is to conduct a public hearing and receive any public comment, if any. Uh, adopt a resolution to confirm the diagram and assessments set forth in the staff report, confirm the levies of the assessments set forth in that same staff report, accept a covenant for Landscape Maintenance District Zone of Benefit Twenty Seven B. And finally, the city clerk is authorized and directed to file the diagram and assessments with the county auditor. With that, I'd be happy to accept any questions.
Thank you very much, Keith. Alicia, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
The city clerk stepped down and allow me to verify.
Are there any members here uh, in the chambers who would like to speak on this item?
Okay. There is one individual on the phone, but their hand is not up, and there does not appear to be anyone on Zoom. Is that correct, Mark?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So then we will uh, The only question would be, we now have any written comment?
I'm trying to look at her email.
We can come back.
I'm not too sure.
I don't necessarily. Can we wait on that and come back to if there's anybody who has a written comment, we can read that? Oh, I'm not sure we want to do that.
Can I ask a question?
Actually, that sounds like.
Here she goes. She's she's coming. She's coming. Okay. All right, Mr. Montes.
So Keith, I have a question for you. Does this have an annual or periodic escalator? Or is it just that's the rate, and then we'd have to go to two eighteen if we needed to or increase that?
Well, we've we've recently had an opinion from the city attorney's office that that COLAs are not legal with regard to our landscape maintenance districts. So at this moment, the forty eight eighty eight is the amount. And it's this is set based upon my understanding of the Landscape and Lighting Act, Landscape and Lighting Act. Forty eight eighty eight is the current assessment that property owners are paying. In all likelihood, I expect that assessment to drop a little bit, perhaps more when we do the annual report in next year, somewhere around June or so.
Okay. My question.
May I clarify that?
Absolutely.
It's not a per se that is not compliant, it's the way it was set up in Madera. So CPIs are permissible if they're established in the correct way, but they were not. So the CPI was not included when the original LMD was created. Just wanted to clarify that.
So would there be any way to correct that?
You'd have to go through a mega Prop two eighteen process.
Okay. This is my question there, too. Thank you. I'm going to bring it back to this one last item under public comment. We've gone through the other issues that Arnoldo has helped us out. Alicia, do we have any written comment on the item C one?
We do not, Mayor, no written public comment.
Thank you much. I will now close public comment. Any other questions from my colleagues regarding this item? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion. So I'll move to approve that C one.
Second.
Motion to approve item C one by Councilmember Montes, second by Councilmember Vegas. Alicia, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Gaios?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Mejia?
Yes.
Councilmember Vegas?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to item D, petitions, bids, resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. Item D one is consultant services agreement with Mark Thomas for grant preparation services for Yosemite Avenue Street Improvement. Mr. Helmut, you also have this item?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor, and council members. This item is relative to a services agreement that with Mark Thomas and company for Yosemite Avenue improvements. In summary, the council adopted the State Route one forty five Yosemite Avenue as a downtown main street project in April twenty twenty. Subsequent to that, Caltrans is currently working on a project to rehabilitate State Route one forty five through the city of Madera. And the limits of that project start on the south at Pecan Avenue and extend to the north and also east to Tozer Avenue. It's a it's a fairly large maintenance project. As part of that project, Caltrans is willing to add certain recommended improvements from the the plan. From here on out, I'll say the plan, but that is Yosemite Avenue is a downtown main street. Caltrans is willing to make certain of those recommended improvements in this particular plan or this project. However, they do not have funding for all the recommended improvements. In recent conversations with Caltrans staff, the following items are being incorporated into their project between Gateway and Lake. It's a it's a it's a fairly decent list compared to that, but there are quite a few other items in the plan that we would like to add. But what they are adding right now is a road diet, which is converging, a conversion of Yosemite Avenue from four lanes to two lanes, adding class two bike lanes between Lake and East Street, I believe that is the limits. And within that area, they would be doing a a buffer of about two feet between the travel lanes and the bike lanes. Bald outs at intersections between East Street and Lake, high visibility crosswalks, street lighting, we're missing. There's a number of spots where the street light is missing, at least between Lake and East Street. That's where they're considering additional street lights. Roundabouts at two intersections, and I heard a comment about consideration of flashers at one or more more locations. Those will be the rapid flashing rectangular beacons that you see here and there around town where they they flash really, really quickly. In an effort to raise additional funding for Caltrans projects, staff is considered applying for grants that can supplement Caltrans project funding. Mark Thomas and Company, I'll refer to Mark Thomas for the most part throughout here, developed a plan, and they have a background on the recommended improvements because it's going straight back to the plan. The Mark Thomas team has the background necessary for preparing grant applications. As part of their agreement that we are proposing tonight, they would complete a funding analysis to identify grant resources that are available. Potential grants include reconnecting communities, pilot grant, rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity, huge acronym by the name of RACE, safe streets and roads for all, local partnership program. Mark Thomas would prepare applications for the RCP grant, update exhibits and estimates for that particular application. That application is due in October thirteenth, twenty twenty two. It's kind of a quick timeline, obviously. If requested, Mark Thomas will also prepare an application for a second grant identified in the funding analysis. The base fee for their services is ninety eight, excuse me, eighty nine thousand, six hundred dollars. And there's additional nine thousand dollars for extra services that go along with that. The funding sources proposed for this is our local transportation funds. We do have additional revenue in there, additional funds in there, and it fits the project in terms of the ability to use it. Our recommendation for tonight is to adopt a resolution approving consultant services agreement with Mark Thomas in the amount of ninety eight thousand, six hundred dollars for grant preparation services for the Yosemite Avenue improvements. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I also have Randy Bell here from our department. He's he's quite a bit more up to date on the grants, and so between the two of us, we should be able to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Keith. Alicia, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we have no written public comment. Mark, do we have anyone on Zoom?
And there's no one on Zoom.
Is there anyone here in the council chambers who would like to comment on the proposed?
Councilmember Rodriguez would like to.
Yes, I see that. We're still under public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I saw his hand.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Rosa. I live at ten zero eight East Yosemite Avenue. So I noticed that a lot of the improvements that were mentioned. However, I do have a question. Would that include sidewalks down Yosemite Avenue?
The the project as proposed includes sidewalks through a very large portion of the project. So long Yosemite Avenue sidewalks are proposed. And one of our methods to supplement the funding on the on the Caltrans project is to build many of the improvements are included in one of our other grants in advance, and that may include ten zero eight Yosemite Avenue. I couldn't tell you that without looking at a map and comparing to other improvements. But overall, yes, sidewalks will be included along there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any further comments from the public in the chambers? I'll now now close public comment. I will now bring it back to discussion from my colleagues, I believe, Mr. Rodriguez. Welcome to the meeting, and you're first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to make a comment for my colleagues also to, you know, kind of apprise them of what's taking place. Councilmember Montes, the mayor, and myself have had the opportunity to have a series of meetings in regards to this this project. And I think in our conversations, we're just trying to leverage some money to raise additional funds so that we can implement a lot of the original stakeholder requests that were brought up in the original Mark Thomas project. And I I believe that with these additional grants, we can actually fulfill a lot more of that original project that was presented before council. And also for the community, the stakeholders that were part of this this engagement or outreach that Mark Thomas had a. I think this is a great opportunity. I hope that, you know, we do receive some of these grants. We do have the Chair of the California Transportation Commission as well in these conversations. And she's committed to helping us and making this project a a not necessarily a pilot, but actually an example of what collaboration between partners can really do. Caltrans, of course, and all these other funds that Keith had mentioned. Hopefully, we can generate a lot more funds to be able to implement all these things. So those are my comments, Mr. Mayor. If anybody else would like to chime in from those conversations, feel free to do so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Montes.
You know, I just wanted to say that Councilmember Rodriguez just summarized that very well. And we're just trying to put ourselves in a better position to go after more grants and partner with Caltrans and whatever other agencies are available.
Okay. Councilmember Mejia.
I would just like to ask a clarifying question of Keith. The ninety eight thousand, six hundred that's being asked for, it would be to apply for one grant? And what would be the most that could be like the amount for for that one grant?
The the ninety eight thousand, six hundred dollars actually includes the potential for two grants. The the first grant is the Reconnecting Communities Grant, and that has the bulk of the funding that's associated with it. We would make a decision later on whether we're going to go for a second grant. There is our it's our it's our hope that we're able to go ahead and secure the Reconnecting Communities Grant and be able to go ahead and apply those funds directly to to Caltrans for their use in in supplementing their funding and adding additional amenities to that project. If if that grant were to be unsuccessful, we would we would be moving on to one of the other grants. We may find it necessary to to apply to a second grant immediately if we're uncertain of what's happening with the first one. In in addition, between those grants that we have identified there, we may choose to go ahead and go for a second one regardless to start doing other amenities out of the plan that move out off of the Yosemite Avenue alignment. As an example, the the study or the plan, it it shows substantial number of improvements on Yosemite Avenue itself, but it also shows a substantial number of improvements on the side streets as well as Fourth Street. So we with the with the grant, the way we the way it's or the agreement, the way it's set, we have some options in terms of going after other grants. And this will, to some degree, be based upon the analysis that Mark Thomas will be doing in terms of the grant, identifying what can and can't be done with those different grants.
I just wanted to expand a very tiny bit really quickly regarding the question.
The project, we had a grant that was established to bring the State Route one forty five through Mark Thomas. That was designated for a four lane, not necessarily the the road diet that's being proposed. So Mark Thomas, I'd like for you to maybe just elaborate on how Mark Thomas's application certainly it aligns with what Caltrans is doing now for the road diet, because it's something different that was proposed back then to what we're doing today.
Sure. The the Mark Thomas study ended up focusing primarily on a four four lane facility. They they did actually have an alternative for a two lane facility with a with a bike track on one side of the street. That that didn't, I'll say, raise to the surface in terms of of a viable alternative, partially because it wasn't it wasn't known at the time that Caltrans would embrace a road diet. But the modifications that they will do to the exhibits from the from the from the plan will be to go ahead and show what Caltrans is actually planning to do right now, which is bike lanes on both sides as opposed to a bike track with two lane biking on only one side of the street. So it's that that revised exhibit and cost estimate will be used to go ahead and assist in in going after those grants.
Thank you, Keith.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Rodriguez. Hilton?
I just wanted to clarify as a follow up to the question that Councilmember Mejia asked as far as the amount of money, because I can see she's concerned about the money and what the city would get in return for such a a large amount for a consultant to prepare a grant. And if you look at your exhibit to the agreement for Part One, or they call it Task One through Task Three Point Two, which is the Grant One, it's about fifty one thousand, two hundred. So that's the amount for Grant One. And then if the city pursues Grant Two, then it would be the additional amount.
Thank you for that clarification. I see no further questions. So I'll bring it back to my colleagues for a motion.
Excuse me, Mayor, let me just ask this point of clarification. Keith, would it be, can we attempt to speculate how much money we could potentially get if we're successful with either of the two grants? Or is it premature?
We can speculate on the first. I can speculate on the first one, but I think it may be best if if Randy jumps in and goes ahead and discusses the grants. He spent some time, he was on a webinar with regard to the reconnecting communities and reviewed some of that other stuff. So Randy, if you can, jump in.
Okay, the the reconnecting communities grant is has a five million dollar minimum grant amount. So our grant would have to be five million dollars. And but that would pay for half the project. So it would, we would have to have a ten million dollar project. Now, part of this, part of what's happening is Mark Thomas will use some of the funding that Caltrans is already incorporating into the project and trying to tie that together. So it's all part of the funding analysis of what we'll do, but it could be substantial substantial money.
So to clarify, can we're proposing that we or that can the council allocate ninety eight thousand dollars? Again, there's no guarantee that we're going to be successful. However, it is one of those items that that in order to even put together a competitive grant, can we feel that Mark Thomas is 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 seasoned? They've done this before, and it probably we would potentially have a much better opportunity of obtaining grant funding versus us attempting to do it in house and simply because of resources and expertise. And so again, and there's no guarantee. But from speaking with the the CCC Chair, Caltrans staff, we feel that we have at at least a fighter's chance of potentially gaining some additional funding.
And Mark Thomas has a history with us regarding this very same project. So they're very robust. Mr. Rodriguez, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I just want to comment on on the the amount of money that's being allocated for this year. Certainly, we are leveraging a hundred thousand dollars or close to a hundred thousand for a possibility of obtaining up to five million dollars, which I think it's a, again, you know, when we say hope, I just want to give confidence in what the current Caltrans Director Tavares has has really stated and has highlighted Madera as a prime example of these particular projects that are taking place. So California has certainly come across a substantial amount of money with surplus. And these grants that are available obviously would be a great opportunity for us. So I would be in favor of us leveraging the small amount of money that we would put. I know in in our city budget, that's a lot of money. But in return, what we can get to hi, just to enhance. But in return, what we can get to hi, um, just to enhance our downtown is, is much greater. So I certainly would be, um, uh, in support of moving forward. Um, I also want to recognize the Fresno EDC and former, uh, um, Councilmember Oliver, who has also played a big part in this as well. So alongside a CTC Chair, uh, Leanne Eager and, and Caltrans, I think we, we've certainly made some strides to try to, um, attract for new funding and, and enhance our community.
Thank you very much. Seeing no more hands raised, I will ask for my colleagues for motion.
I so pro, move to approve D one as presented.
Thank you.
Motion to approve item D one by Councilwoman Gallegos, second by Councilmember Mejia. Alicia, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Sorry, I apologize. Council, um, Member Viegas.
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Mejia?
Yes.
Councilmember Viegas?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, Alicia. We will now move on to, um, item D two. Agreement with Provost and Pritchard Consulting Group Incorporated for Engineering Design Services for water main replacement under the Fresno River. I believe, Matt, you have this item?
I certainly do. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
This is a, uh, item for approving a consultant services agreement with Provost and Pritchard Engineering Group for, uh, engineering design for the water main replacement at the Fresno River. Uh, as an introduction, my name is Matthew Bolus. I'm the Senior Engineer with the Engineering Department. I want to also note that the presentation shows that the name of the consultant is Provost and Pritchard Engineering Group. Uh, and that the, uh, staff report notes them as Provost and Pritchard Consulting Group. They are, as shown on the, uh, the information packet, Provost and Pritchard Engineering Group for the record. Um, this is basically what the pipeline looks like right now.
If you have.
Uh, a, a major portion.
Matt, excuse you, Matt. Sorry. Um, if you have a presentation, uh, if you could make sure it's on the screen, we don't, we don't see anything on the screen. Okay.
Is it on the screen now?
Yes, it is.
I had to hit that last button. I'm sorry. This is, uh, the pipeline runs across the Fresno River from Central to Riverside. And this pipeline is located between Gateway and D Street. Uh, a majority of it is buried, but as you can see here, uh, we have a probably two hundred foot section that is exposed. And so this pipeline goes from well eighteen, which is at Gateway and Central, and it basically feeds the Madera Water Tank, uh, north of Riverside at Columbia and South. So why in particular do we not have, uh, soil above this pipeline? Well, uh, in this case, the Fresno River has caused streambed erosion. And this is a naturally occurring condition in river systems. Uh, the, the water flow through the Fresno River constantly erodes the dirt, soil and sand and transports it to other places. And this soil erosion has exposed the water main that was once buried six feet deep. And, uh, as I showed, the, uh, the pipeline is exposed and it's exposed to the elements, uh, vandalism, uh, the potential for water contamination and potential for damage for future high water flow conditions. So, uh, all areas, as we all understand, all water mains should be constructed to a depth of six feet if they're not elevated somehow on a bridge. Looking back in February two thousand nineteen, Provost and Pritchard, uh, Engineering Group, we identify him as PMP, was contracted to provide the initial thirty percent design services for this project and to scope out where we wanted, what did we want to do to fix this problem? Due to the unknown field conditions, we didn't take their contract to the hundred percent level. We really didn't know where, what direction we were going to go with this. Were we going to go and put a, a line on Gateway Bridge? Were we going to abandon the system, put a line on D Street? So we really couldn't scope the final cost identified with the design level work. Given that the consultant completed the surveying, the proposed, uh, main layout, the thirty percent level of effort, staff is recommending that we complete the remaining portion of this, uh, design work and all the permitting required with Provost and Pritchard Engineering Group. City has negotiated an engineering service contract with PMP for a hundred and fifteen thousand eight hundred dollars to complete the work and complete the environmental studies and secure all the state, federal and railroad permits. And there are, anytime we go across a riverway, uh, there are a lot of permits, state and federal permits that we have to comply with, plus the railroad permit. So there was quite a bit of, uh, time and effort to secure the permits. Uh, the work is, uh, the cost for this work, there's no physical impact in the general fund. All the funding for this project, uh, is identified in the Water Utility Fund. And this project is identified as a capital improvement budget in our CIP, uh, project. Uh, our recommendation tonight is adopt a resolution approving this agreement with Provost and Pritchard Engineering Group for a hundred and fifteen thousand eight hundred for design services for this water main replacement across the Fresno River. And I am available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Matt. Um, are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Item D two? Alicia, do we have any written comments or anyone on Zoom wishing to comment?
We have no written public comment, Mayor, and no one on Zoom.
Thank you very much. I will now close public comment.
Mr. Mayor, we have someone in the audience.
I'm sorry. Yes, step forward, please, to the podium.
Good evening. I just had a question. The pipeline, is it possible that that pipeline could be, well, not the pipeline, but the, uh, erosion that the, um, dirt, the soil could be brought back into the area versus, you know, cut and removed or, you know, lowering it? Basically, could you raise the level of soil? The possibility?
I believe that's a question for either Keith or.
I'm, I could barely hear it, but did he say we were going to elevate dirt over the pipeline? Is that what he was asking?
Yeah. So, so the question is, Matt, can we, rather than burying the line, can we simply add dirt on top of the line?
Hopefully I captured your question.
Yes.
We actually, every year, uh, public work staff goes out and actually tries to bury the line with dirt and sand. And, uh, it gets washed out every year. So you really can't control what mother, mother nature does. The best thing we can do is either remove it from across the river by putting it on a bridge, which we found was too expensive, or just basically dig it a lot deeper and get it underground. Uh, only a third of the, of the pipeline is exposed. Two thirds of the other pipeline is still eight to 10 feet deep and it's, uh, working quite well.
How long would that last?
Oh, the pipeline's been in, I don't have an exact date, but probably thirty-five or forty years. So if you put it deep enough, it will last the lifetime of the pipeline.
That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, we will now close public comment. Then I will bring it back to my colleagues for discussion and/or a motion.
Move to approve item D two. My question was stolen.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor to approve item D two by Councilmember Montes, second by Councilmember Gallegos. Alicia, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Mejia?
Yes.
Councilmember Viegas?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm having a difficult time getting it off the screen. I apologize.
It's not there. It's gone.
Thank you very much. And the, and it's off of the screen now.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you for that report. Uh, we will move on to item D three, agreement for memorial monuments at Centennial Park and Rotary Park. This presentation is by Gabriela Salazar, Administrative Analyst for Parks.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, Councilmembers and members of the audience. Uh, my name is Gabby Salazar. I'm the Administrative Analyst for the Parks and Community Services Department. And like mentioned, I will be presenting on this item tonight. So the item is for the agreement for memorial monuments at Centennial Park and Rotary Park. And for a bit of context, there are two memorial monuments that we are planning to install. The first one being at Rotary Park. This goes back to a resolution that council, uh, adopted back on September second, twenty twenty with, to dedicate the horseshoe facility at Rotary Park to Harland and Sharon Ripeto. Both Harland and Sharon have been active in the horseshoe community since two thousand. They, uh, Harland was, is the founding member of the Big Valley Horseshoe League. And both Harland and Sharon were instrumental in the installation of the horseshoe facility located at the park and have maintained on a volunteer basis, the horseshoe pits at the other, at other parks in the last two decades. Most recently, just last month, actually, um, the Big Valley Horseshoe League repainted the horseshoe pit fences at Rotary Park. And like I mentioned, uh, Harland was, is the founding, uh, member of the Big Valley Horseshoe League. The second memorial monument that we are planning is at Centennial Park. And this goes back to July twenty twenty when news broke out of two-year-old Thaddeus Saran, who was reported as missing from his home. Um, as the news broke out, we discovered that, um, his remains were discovered near an orchard just outside of the city several days later. There was, there were numerous, um, individuals and community groups that expressed a strong desire to memorialize the memory of Thaddeus due to the extraordinary circumstances that occurred. And the suggestion to dedicate the playground at Centennial Park came up. On August nineteenth, twenty twenty, council did adopt a resolution to dedicate the playground, um, at Centennial Park in honor of Thaddeus. So the very neat part about the dedication of the playground at Centennial Park is that the park, the playground, I'm sorry, the playground itself was built specifically for children like Thaddeus. Thaddeus had special needs. He was nonverbal and did not yet walk, um, among other challenges that were caused by his preterm birth. So the park itself, um, is meant to be socially inclusive. Um, and it is intended to remove any barriers, um, or boundaries that prohibit, um, or limit children, the families, caretakers from, uh, playing together. We do want to note that there was a total of three thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars that were fundraised, for the memorial plaque, uh, for Thaddeus, and this was by the Warriors of Faith and the Justice for Thaddeus Group. So IFB, the Invitation for Bid twenty twenty-two, twenty-three dash zero three was released. Uh, it was duly noticed in the Madera Tribune newspaper, being advertised both July twenty-third and July thirtieth. The invitation for bids was distributed and posted at, uh, dirt, at several platforms, um, as well as emailed directly to contractors that specialize in the scope of work that we were looking for. There was only one bid that was received and this was, the bid was received from David J. Boyle Electric Shop. The bid amount came in at fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. The bid was deemed to be responsive and responsible. Uh, David J. Boyle Electric Shop is an experienced general in electrical engineering and construction company. They are a family-owned business since nineteen twenty with a local office in town at three oh eight South D Street. So for a little bit of context, the memorial monument located at the Fire Station fifty-eight served as the basis for the scope of work and design plans of these two memorial monuments. The intent is for the two memorial monuments to, uh, replicate the, the look, um, of the memorial monument, uh, displayed below here. Each monument was estimated at twenty thousand dollars. Uh, this included the cost of the plaques. A total of twenty thousand dollars was budgeted for the Ripeto Memorial Monument. A total of seventeen thousand dollars was budgeted for the Saran Memorial Monument, uh, keeping in mind the donation of the three thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And the plaques have been purchased and were under the, um, exceeded, uh, or did not exceed the budgeted amount of five thousand dollars each. Um, they were just under ten thousand dollars. So with the bid amount received at fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty dollars, the city is anticipating saving over thirteen thousand dollars. And the cost of the memorial monuments has been respectively budgeted into the contracted services expense line item in Park's budget. So the recommendation is to approve a construction services agreement with David J. Boyle Electric Shop in the amount of fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty dollars for the two memorial monuments. And the alternatives tonight would be to have council request staff bring additional information to a subsequent meeting or council direct staff to publish a new invitation for bids to allow for additional bids to be submitted. At this point, I can, uh, take questions.
Thank you very much for that report, Gabriela. Alicia, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak? Or is anyone here in the council chambers wishing to speak on this item? If not, uh, Alicia, do you have any comments from the written form or on Zoom?
We do not, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I will now close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for discussions or questions. Councilwoman Gallegos?
I just have a comment, um, Mayor Garcia. I'd like to thank this council and the past council members. We do have, um, Councilman Donna Holly in the audience today, who voted on these two honorees that we are now, um, going to have plaques at these locations for. So I would like to thank the residents and my colleagues for approving these. Thank you.
So, um, then, uh, seeing no further comments or questions regarding this item, I will ask my colleagues for a motion.
I assume, I so move to approve, approve D three as presented, please.
Motion to approve item D three by Councilwoman Gallegos, second by Councilmember Montes. Alicia, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Mejia?
Yes.
Councilmember Viegas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, Alicia. We will now move on to item D four. Initiation of proceedings for the annexation of Track twenty-one S O two, TSM twenty nineteen to two thousand, uh, zero three, Pecan Square subdivision into Community Facilities District two thousand five dash one. I believe, Mr. Smith, you have this, um, item?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, good evening and good evening, Councilmembers, Senior Planner Robert Smith. Uh, the project represents annexation of number eleven, uh, for Pecan Square into the Community Facilities District. The, uh, this project represents, uh, sorry, the, uh, Community Facilities District is a way to create a special tax for public service funding throughout the city and captures new development to ensure sufficient financing is available to provide any increased service requirements generated by new development. The district to be annexed, um, is highlighted in red, uh, to the south of the map and shows other annexations brought previously to the, uh, to the district. Uh, the tentative subdivision map was approved in twenty nineteen for a hundred and twelve single-family residential, uh, units on a twenty-two acre site. And the conditions of approval associated with that, um, require that the applicant, uh, come back for this annexation application. The assessment would be, uh, five hundred and twenty-four and forty-one cents, uh, for the new annexation per, um, individual dwelling unit. And the recommendation for that item tonight is to adopt the resolutions, adopting the boundary map, declaring the intent to annex land uh, into the CFD and allowing for the process to continue towards a special election and annexation, uh, of the CFD on October fifth, twenty twenty-two. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. You caught me off guard. I was reading. I will now open up public comment. Are there? I will now open up public comment. Are there any members of the public here in the chambers that are wishing to talk, discuss this item or make any questions? Any written comments or Zoom, Alicia?
We have none, Mayor.
Okay. I will now close public comment and bring this back to my colleagues for discussion and/or emotion. On item D4.
I move to approve D4.
Second.
Motion to approve item D4 by Mayor Pro Tem Evans, second by Councilmember Villegas. Alicia, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Mejia?
Yes.
Councilmember Villegas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much for that. We will move on to item D5, initiation of proceedings for the annexation of Track 21-S-01, TSM 2020-202, Crown Tozer subdivision into Community Facilities District 2005-1. Again, Mr. Smith, you have this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is the same presentation as previously, so less directed. Otherwise, I can skip through to the more pertinent parts for the Crown Tozer specific, uh, Community Facilities District.
Absolutely.
So the reasoning is the same. The, uh, location of the, um, property is towards the east of the city, central east of the city and is shown by the outline in red. This tentative subdivision map was approved in February of 2021 for 63 single-family lots on an 11-acre site. And the precise plan associated with that was approved, um, in, uh, December of last year. Excuse me, that should be January of this year. Uh, again, the amount per dwelling unit is 524 and 41 cents. And the recommendation is to adopt the resolutions, adopting the boundary map and declaring the intent to annex lands into the CFD, allowing for the process to continue towards a special election and annexation into the CFD on October 5th, 2022. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public here in the chambers wishing to comment on this item? Are there any members of the public on Zoom or on written form?
No, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'll now close public comment and I'll bring it to my colleagues for discussion and/or emotion. On item D5.
I so move to approve D5.
Motion to approve item D5 by Mayor Pro Tem Evans, second by Councilmember Montes. Alicia, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Mejia?
Yes.
Councilmember Villegas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Alicia. We will now move on to item D6. These are corrections to. Did you have something? What was that? Okay. Item D6 is Corrections to Attachments to Resolutions Number 22-101, 22-102, and 22-103 for water, sewer, and solid waste utility rates. Mr. Kingsley, do you have this item?
Yes, I do. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor again, uh, council members. With this item, basically what we're trying to do here is to make some corrections on previously adopted resolutions. On July 28th, uh, the City Council adopted Resolutions Number 22-101, 22-102, and, uh, 22-103, which updated the rates for water, sewer, and, uh, and, uh, solid waste. Uh, subsequently, staff identified that there were certain rates that were not included in those, in those resolutions at the county meeting, uh, at the council meeting. And, uh, those include rates for water, sewer, and, um, and solid waste. These rates are for non-metered accounts, uh, which, um, was not intended to change from current rates. And while the city is in the process of installing meters for all customers, there is a small group of customers where meters have not yet been installed and are such are being charged a flat rate. So the proposed resolutions, um, will add those current water and sewer flat rate charges to those customers where meters have not yet been installed. It also, there are, there were some solid waste rates that were not included in the rest study, but was mistakenly excluded from the solid waste, uh, solid waste resolution number 22-103, adopted in July, uh, on July 20th. So basically, these new resolutions incorporates all those ones that were erroneously left out of those resolutions. And, uh, essentially, um, this resolution will, uh, allow our staff to include those rates and continue to build them. And with that, I can answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Are there any members here in the public chambers willing to, wishing to comment on this item? Alicia, do we have any comments?
We do not, Mayor. No comments received.
I will now close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for comments or a motion.
Can I take them all three at the same time? I move to approve items D6, 1, 2, and 3.
Second.
I have two competing. Who's going to take it? Who's going to take the second?
Go ahead and give it to C.C. Excuse me, Councilwoman Gallegos.
Okay. Motion to approve item D6, uh, uh, motion by, um, Councilmember Montes, second by Councilmember Gallegos. Alicia, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Mejia?
Yes.
Councilmember Villegas?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to item E, administrative reports. City Council review with the City External Auditor, the annual audit results and acceptance of fiscal year 2020-21, annual comprehensive financial report, ACFR. Mr. Kingsley, do you also have this item?
Yes, I do. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I am really pleased and happy to bring to you this, uh, fiscal year 2021 annual comprehensive financial report. We do have the, um, external auditors, uh, Mr. Ken Pun. I think he's logged on and he has a presentation for you. But before he gets into that presentation, I'd just like to introduce the item. The, um, this is the financial report for the fiscal year that ended at June 30, 2021. And you might ask, oh, when the why is so late? You know, um, the reason being that this report, uh, you know, at least that's what I said, um, I'm told and I can see, from the city side was prepared and ready to go, uh, last December. However, uh, the city of Madera has a component unit, the Housing Authority, that's normally included in the total financial picture of the city, being that the City Council is also the board of directors of the, um, Housing Authority. And the reason being, um, Housing Authority has not been able to, um, uh, get ready their financial reports, uh, for the fiscal year ended at June 30, 2021. And, uh, part of, part of their primary reason is that they changed their fiscal year from June 30 to September 30 to be consistent with the federal year end. Federal year end being, um, the federal being the, you know, the main source of their, uh, funding. So that puts a twist into their operations and coupled with, uh, you know, what I, I'm told, you know, staff shortage within the Housing Authority. So they were not able to prepare that report timely for us to include it in the, um, in the financial, um, report of the city for the fiscal year that ended, uh, June 30, 21. The city had several, one or two options, you know, one is to continue to wait. But we did make the decision because the city has, uh, certain legal obligations and continuing disclosure requirements, you know, that are included in all the trust, um, agreements, of the outstanding debts that we have. And we have been fielding calls, you know, when will this be ready? So the decision was made, we're going to go ahead and issue the city's, um, uh, ACFR for, for that fiscal year and move on. But, uh, the auditors will point out, because the Housing Authority is a significant component unit that we have reported over the years, there would be no information of, um, about housing in this report. Therefore, while the city, um, gets a clean opinion, there's a caveat there that says, well, because of the Housing Authority, a component unit, that is not included, so it's sort of an adverse opinion, uh, with respect to that component unit. It doesn't really detract from the city's own, uh, clean opinion with respect to the city's financial operations. So the decision was made, we need to go ahead because the city needs to comply with some of the financial and continuing, um, disclosure obligation that the city has. So that's why, uh, we're bringing it to you now. Uh, it's been done. And as I said, I'm happy it's done and, and we can move on to the audit of the next fiscal year. With that, I will turn it over to, um, Ken.
Yep, I'm, I'm on. So thank you, Mr. Kingsley. So, uh, thank you so much and good evening, uh, Mayor and Member of the City Council. Again, my name is Ken Pun. I'm the engagement partner. And along with me is Andrew, Andrew Roth, which is my supporting partner on this engagement. So tonight I do actually have a PowerPoint presentation to go over the audit, uh, so that you have, uh, the idea of what, what, what are we looking at, uh, for the fiscal year 2021? So let me share my screen real quick. So are you all seeing my, my screen?
Yes.
Perfect. So again, thank you so much, uh, for giving us the time tonight to present the, uh, annual comprehensive annual financial report for the city of, um, Madera for the year-end June 30, 2021. And thank you, Kingsley, for, for letting the council know the, the reason why we are, the, the report was, um, was, um, being delayed in issuing the financial statement due to the fact of the, uh, the Housing Authority is not be able to produce a audited financial statement to include in, uh, in, in the city's financial statement. So, uh, what we are going through today is, um, the scope of work that we perform and being engaged by the city. There are certain required communications under the, uh, the professional auditing standard. And it's the best time to, for us to go through that. So it will give you the highlight of, on what we have in the, um, in the communications letter to the, uh, to the city. Andrew will take over from here to talk about the approach to the audit, the overview of the financial statement, and then some key financial indicators and the key pension and OPEP information. And last but not least is the audit results. And we'll give the City Council and public, um, if they have any questions, we are more than happy to answer it at that time. So the scope of work is actually include the city, like tonight is pretty much focusing on the financial statement audit, which is the annual comprehensive financial report. Also, we do perform the compliance audit and then, um, also is, um, is already submitted to the, uh, to the, um, uh, federal audit clearinghouse regarding your federal grants. Our professional responsibility in these financial statements, it's, we are like, since you are engaging us to perform the audit, we have the responsibility to form and express our opinion on whether the financial statement are free from material misstatement, whether due from fraud or errors. We are required to plan and, and perform the audit to, to obtain reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance about the financial statement are free from material misstatement. We consider the internal control. However, on such, in such consideration, we are only to decide, like to help in designing our audit procedures and not to provide any assurance in the internal control. However, we will, uh, if we identify any material weaknesses or material, or significant deficiency in internal control, you definitely see it in, in a separate letter talking about the, uh, the internal control issue. Required communications, um, under the professional auditing standard. The first one, uh, the first thing first, the city is required to, to adopt sound accounting policy. And the significant accounting policies adopted by the city, it's all disclosed in note 1 to the financial statement. Also, keep that in mind, GASP never rests, the governmental accounting standard board, which is the standard-setting bodies for state, local governments. This year, we do actually have couple of the, uh, GASP pronouncement that we need to implement during the fiscal year 2021 audit. The major one, which is GASP Statement Number Statement, uh, uh, Number 84, Regarding Fiduciary Activities, which is actually converting your, um, your agency fund to custodial fund. And there are some big changes in how we reported in the fiduciary, in the fiduciary fund financial statement. Also, uh, Number 90, majority equity interest, which, um, in, uh, in, in what we look at the city's financials, there's no, um, no such, um, transactions that's applicable to, um, Number 90. So Number 90 kind of irrelevant in your, in this year, uh, report. As you may aware, in these financial statement, we, uh, we certainly use some estimate in the financial statement, including the fair value on the, on the investment. So we are not only recording the cost, but we need to mark to the fair, fair market value and disclose the fair market value disclosure, um, the, the hierarchy in the, uh, in the footnote disclosure. We also look at the capital asset based on the estimate useful life of the, uh, of the asset and the, uh, using a straight-line effort, uh, method to, uh, depreciate your, uh, capital asset. Uh, and net pension liability and OPEP liability is all based on the actuarial assumption that they made. And also depending on the, uh, the, uh, fiduciary net position in your, uh, investment account so that to determine these, uh, liability on the financial statement. We do also list out the, uh, sensitive disclosure. So I also always list note 1 because it's your, your accounting policy. Note 11 and 12 relating to your pension plan and other, uh, post-employment benefit, which is actually determined how, how to determine the, uh, net pension liability and net OPEP liabilities on the financial statement. We do actually have a proprietary adjustment because of the implementation of GASP Statement Number 84, so that we can make the adjustment. And then on Note 19, we also talk about the, uh, the, uh, dollar amount that is received by the city regarding the American Rescue Plan Act funding. Very, like, I would like to crudos to the city. There, there is no uncorrected misstatement reported. However, we do actually identify a material items, uh, which we pass on during the current fiscal year. So we only have like one uncorrected misstatement, um, that we noted. But, uh, overall, the financial statement are fairly present in all material respect. Once in a while, you may actually seek a second opinion and by consulting with other accountants, management inform us about that. And, um, and to the best of our knowledge, there is no such consultation. We did, uh, did not encounter any significant difficulties with management. And also, we do not have any disagreement with management in terms of accounting treatment or audit procedures performed. That concludes my required communications. I'm going to turn it over to Andrew Roth, my partner, to talk about the approach to the audit and then talking about the, the highlights, which is the numbers on the financial statement.
Hello, uh, Mayor and City Council. I'm just wondering, so we'll be going through, uh, some audit approach and some, some, the numbers in the financial statements, also some key indicators. So let's start with the audit approach. So the Pun Group's audit approach to audit, uh, this is typically a four-phase. Your detailed, uh, planning, it's where we're going to meet with city's management, obtain an understanding of city's policies and procedures, any changes in the current year, and we'll identify any risk areas. Then we'll move into our risk-based review of internal controls or systems and compliance, where we will review the internal controls on, and also all significant transaction classes, performing walkthroughs and test, and testing controls, or also perform preliminary analytics. And that will be our interim phase. And then our year-end phase, we'll be conducting, the validation and testing of balances, but we will, we will, we will conduct audit procedures on account balances in the general ledger, uh, perform complete confirmation procedures, perform data analytics using our AI tools, and performing some substantive analytical procedures. Uh, and for, for phase four, this is the review of the financial initial audit opinion. And this is where we perform. And then this is where we perform uh we help assist in drafting the report and then perform quality procedures following the quality control standards issued by the A I C P A. And then after that, at the end, we will issue the report. So let me go through and overview the financial statements. So with this, so your government-wide statements, this is gonna be your overall statement that would have a the government activities as well as business-type activities. If you do look at the statements within the after, you will note a difference from the prior year, because the prior year, we do have the column on the far right side that had the housing authority. And since there were no numbers this year, that was not included, just to note. So this year, uh the assets at the end of the year, at the end of fiscal year twenty one, uh June thirtieth, twenty twenty one, assets were at a four hundred fifty-five million uh nine hundred seventy-six thousand, uh increased around four hundred twenty-two, nine hundred fifty-five thousand. Uh the deferred uploads of resources, uh those were eleven million, two hundred and four thousand. Uh the liabilities uh were at a hundred forty-nine million, eight hundred forty-three thousand. Uh there was an increase from a hundred thirty-one million, eight hundred seventy-nine. You defer to input of the resources and decreased a little bit and was at a one point, one point four million. Uh so your net your net position, so this, so your net investor in capital assets, this is gonna be your the capital assets, uh net of related debt. So that increased from two hundred forty-four million from two hundred twenty-five million. Uh you're sure you're restricted that position. So this would be anything legally restricted um by law. So this is on decrease from four uh from fifty-six million to forty-seven million. And then you're unrestricted. This would just be the anything that is not included in the prior category is that it increased from to twenty-three million from fifteen million from the prior in the prior year. So your government-wide changes in net position has stated this also as they call them the right to something that we had the housing information last year. So just note that. The expenses, uh you'll note that the expenses from uh the current year and the current the prior year, current year, uh decreased from seventy-five million to sixty-nine million. Uh your program revenues, so this is your charges for services, that increased from thirty-six million, about thirty-six million to paid in to forty-fourty-one million. Uh so your operating grants and contributions uh that decreased from about eighteen million to to ten million in the current year. Your capital grants and contributions stayed steady and they ended at four point five million. So this uh your net cost of services, so it's pretty much would be um all your program costs, all your expenses in your program revenues, which can be allocated specifically to certain costs, that pretty much includes just general taxes. Um so that actually, the the prior year, your net cost services was about sixteen million, and the current year is about fourteen points thirteen point seven million. So then the general taxes increased uh from the prior year to current year from uh twenty-two, about twenty-two million to thirty million. Uh the other revenues, so this will be your investment income, um gain or loss in sale of assets that decreased from a three point one million uh down to eight hundred forty-five thousand. And then in the prior year, we did, and we had a special item that was about two million dollars that that was not in the current year. So current year's change in that assets um was seventeen point seven million in the current year. That's an increase of about uh six point five million from the prior year, change in that that net position. So next slide. So your general fund is stated in the budget earlier, your general fund is like is your main fund. And now most of the spending is is within your general fund. So that is the that is the main fund for the city. Uh so assets within the general fund um increased uh to forty-five million from uh twenty-eight million in the prior year. Um the liabilities also increased uh to fourteen million uh from three million in the prior. A large part of this is that the city did receive uh ARPA-related funding that is also it's both in assets and also an unearned revenue. So that's why you see a significant increase in both assets and liabilities in the general fund. So your deferred inputs of resources increased, um it decreased about a hundred thirty thirty-two thousand to about a hundred thousand in at the end of the current year. Um so your fund balance, um the your non-spendable fund balance, um was about a hundred and hundred and forty thousand in the current year, the decrease of eighty-five thousand. Uh your restricted fund balance, so these are items that are legally restricted on or by law. And these decreased from four hundred one thousand to seven, four hundred one thousand uh to so zero. Uh this is actually an add change in allocation. I believe that amount went to assigned from restricted. It was just a a change in allocation on where that was placed. Um so that money action. So then you're committed, which is typically a commitment is something that is a committed by the the city's city council. Uh typically, that's gonna be your um like your stabilization funds. And I believe there's also measure, the measure K fund in there as well. Um so that was eleven million in the current year. Uh your assigned fund balance, so this is gonna be assignments from uh from the the city manager, who's typically the person that would make assignments, and that increased uh from about six point seven nine to thirteen point nine million in the current year. Then your unassigned fund balance, this is the the remaining funds that aren't included in other areas, uh decreased uh from seven point three, seven point four to five point four million in the current year. So overall, your total fund balance in the current year could increase about five point six nine to thirty-nine point seven.
Yeah, one other thing that I would like to uh to add on here, uh talking a little bit more on the unassigned fund balance is uh this is the 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 money that's like set aside by city management and um this stipulate to different paragraphs. And and majority like uh I can give you couple couple of the uh big-ticket item here, including the measure K police and file protection, about like five point seven million dollars. The future annual stip uh stipend payment about like one point three million dollars, uh the heavy insurance premium of two point seven million dollars. Insurance reserve about like three million dollars. Um and the debt service is about like the uh a million dollars. And the rest is relating to the golf course and the O P A liability. So it's pretty, pretty good, healthy uh set aside because those are a big-ticket item. And I know there's a commitment from the uh from the city council um to the uh to the taxpayer regarding the measure K money. So it's kind of split it between the commitment on 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 between like one like you have the commitment on for uh one point eight million dollars and then in the uh in the signed fund balance for five point seven million dollars.
Going forward, um so this is your general fund changes in fund balance. Um so in the current year, the revenues um in and the general fund increased uh about one point one million dollars. There was an increase in sales tax on prior that we didn't note in in the review of revenue for the current year. So that it was about thirty-five million in the current year. The expenditures uh decreased from thirty-six million to thirty thirty-two point nine, around thirty-three million. So those are a decrease of about three million dollars. There were payroll decreases in other other areas related to COVID that that were decreased in the current year. So your revenue or expenditures was a positive revenue over expenditures as opposed to the current year as a prior year where it was a negative uh two million dollars. So there was about a four point five million dollar difference between prior year and current year in that revenue over expenditures number. Uh your other financing source and uses, so this is your the net transfers, uh this was pretty steady and it stayed about three million dollars. Um proceeds from issuance of debt, uh that would be, it was about ninety-one thousand in the current year, an increase. And then on the other, uh that was just a decrease um up to twenty-two thousand. So your financial indicators and key pension information. Um so your net cost of services, so this is gonna be uh based on your statement of activities in your government activities. This really is um kind of like fees and charges that um that are made by the city compared to the expenditures um that can be changed by the city. And then the tax revenue would be the other portion. So your net cost of services decreased uh from prior to current year from twenty-four million to uh twenty-one million. And the tax revenue actually increased uh from twenty-two one twenty-two million to thirty million. So the right the ratio um of the cost of services to tax revenue decreased. Um which is a you prefer you want your net cost services to be to be below the the tax revenues. That's a good sign. But um with COVID and all the changes, this number seems seems to have been fluctuating on a lot of cities over like another year. So we'll see how that goes in the future years.
Yeah. And then also, this ratio is kind of showing the uh the financial health during the current fiscal year. And then like for this year, it's definitely the uh the the net cost of service is completely uh covered by by the tax revenue without the uh the special items or based on the investment earnings. And also, it's because of the uh because of the uh measure K monies coming in. And that's why you see a big uh changes in your tax revenue during the current fiscal year. That's that's gonna help the in in building the ratios here.
So your own, this is your unassigned fund balance to annual expenditures. Um so your undefined reserve is um what's left over that's not included. Looking at your the fund balance last vacation note sixteen, uh you do have a a general fund stabilization reserve, which is not accounted for within this with it within this calculation. So the calculation with the unassigned fund balance, uh your ratio that compared to your annual expenditures uh decreased from twenty percent to about sixteen percent. Um and I believe about twenty percent is a typical, the where uh is a typically where one people want to have that much in their rainy day one. But I do, if I were to add your uh the the stabilization reserve, if you're at about forty-five percent. So if you were to add your unassigned as well as that committed reserve that you guys put, you're about forty-five percent of annual expenditures. So net pension liability, this is um kind of the what will happen with the change in the discount rate. Um if in one calories were to change it from the current seven point one five percent uh and to with minus a minus a percent or plus a percent, uh I believe more likely to be the minus a percent. So if they were to go down a whole percentage, uh your total pension liability would go from fifty-one million to seventy-three million. And then for some reason it went up, uh it would go down to thirty thirty-three million. So your net O P A liability, um so your net O P A liability is actually gonna have two different sensitivity ratios. Um one's gonna be based on that discount rate that we discussed, uh some of your net pension liabilities on the um the fiduciary net position uh changes in the market. Uh so you your if they were to if the discount rate decreased to one percent, I it it would go from three point seven and about four point two. And if it went up a a percent, it'd be a it would decrease to about three point three. And your other your other rate changes would be the healthcare, overall healthcare cost trend rates. Um and these are both based over a period of time, um using assumptions. And then so if the if the healthcare cost trend rate went down a percent, you your health, your liability would go down to three point two million. And if it went up a percent, it'd go up to four point three million.
So I'm gonna take back on the uh fine uh audit results. So as uh Ken Sli already uh talked to you about the uh about the primary government, which include your governmental activities, your business-type activities, each major fund and the other aggregate information in the financial statement. Uh we're issuing an unmodified opinion and on the discreetly presented components unit, which is the housing authority. We are giving an adverse opinion on that and has nothing to do with the city. It's all based out of the the um the the components unit. But uh what that what that means about the uh unmodified opinion, which is the 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 best opinion that CPA firm can give it out to a to a to an entity, which state that the financial statement are fairly present in all material respect. Uh significant accounting policy have been consistently applied. The estimates are reasonable and the disclosure are properly reflected in these financial statement. The reason for adverse opinion, because the housing authority has not issued the uh the audited financial statement in the timely fashion. And because of that, like we we are disclosing that um we we have no choice that we need to give out an adverse opinion because it's a it's a departure of gap. Um so that's had nothing to do with the city itself. And kind of uh recover some of the things that we 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 talk about that earlier. Uh we do not have any disagreement with with management, no accounting issue, accounting principle are consistently applied. A deficiency cover to be material weaknesses in internal control, uh over financial reporting was reported is because due to the uh the housing authority. Um no significant deficiency in internal control over the financial reporting and or compliance were noted. No material irregular irregularity discovered, and we don't have any other matters to disclose. So let's conclude our presentation here. Uh if you get have any questions, we are more than happy to answer this anytime.
Thank you very much for that report on the audit.
You're welcome.
Do we have any members of the public wishing to address this item? Do we have anybody in written or?
We do not, mayor.
We got your form uh on this item.
No written public comment and no one on Zoom.
Okay, thank you much. I'll bring it back to my colleagues. I'll close public comment on this item and bring it back to my colleagues for discussion and their emotion. Council member Montes.
So I had a question on how the opinion affects uh the housing authority as an agency. I know it's not their audit, but it's the same board. And what recommendations um I didn't hear to correct that because that we're on different uh fiscal years. And I think that's the reason for the delay. Not necessarily that the the other organization did not want to provide the documents.
So. Sure. Um yeah, so the the opinion is actually not affecting the city itself. However, however, because it's a discreetly presented components unit, we we have no choice that we need to issue an adverse opinion because of the departure of gap and needs to be included. Um we don't foresee any issue regarding the uh regarding the uh to the city regarding on the uh on the credit rating or not, because you do actually um do your fiduciary responsibility to provide the uh the uh continuing disclosure um as a city. Um the um housing authority this year, they changed their fiscal year end. And that will be automatically um corrected in the upcoming year audit in fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Because because they move out the uh the fiscal year end to September thirty of of uh twenty twenty-one for our fiscal year twenty twenty-two, we I'm hoping at that time, like they they will be issuing their September thirty financials, uh twenty twenty-one financial statement at that time, so that we can include it in the twenty twenty-two audit. And that will be automatically corrected in the in the upcoming year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further comments or questions for my colleagues? Seeing none, I will now accept a motion for item E one.
I'm moving.
I make a motion.
E one.
I think Mr. Viegas beat you to it this time. Uh motion to approve item E one by council member Viegas, second by council member Montes. Alisi, would you call the role, please?
Council member Gallegos.
Yes.
Council member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Council member Montes.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Evans.
Yes.
Council member Mejia.
Yes.
Council member Viegas.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Um thank you very much, gentlemen, for that report on the on the audit.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Um we now we will move on to item E two. Uh direction regarding the annual um commemoration of Juneteenth in the city of Madera. I believe, Mr. Rodriguez, you have this item.
Thank you very much, mayor, members of the council. This item is being brought before the council this evening at the request of city council at the last meeting, where Mayor Protim had suggested to uh can to our colleagues to to agendize this item for discussion. So can let me start off by uh a very, very brief history of, you know, come what is Juneteenth. Uh it gets it's currently the oldest nationally celebrated uh commemoration of the ending of slavery in the U S. It's observed on June uh nineteen each year. It acknowledges a period in U S history that has shaped and continues to influence our society today. And at the same time, it supports assessment, um self-improvement and the planning for future uh come for the future to make significant and lasting improvements in our society. It was recognized as a U S federal holiday in twenty twenty-one. Um and there are, there are some surrounding communities that recognize it at a local level, and there are some that are not. However, I will say that it is gaining traction and more and more um it's more and more um either can local governments or county governments are starting to begin to recognize it as as a holiday. Um so again, because this item is uh is being brought before council um to consider potential options. Um come one potential option is to formally recognize Juneteenth as a day to encourage our community to honor and to reflect on the conditions and experiences of others. Um another potential option could be to to close uh city facilities for non-emergency services, very similar to other holidays. Um, or on top of that, any, really, it's, it's the prerogative of the city council or the community to come up with any other ideas or suggestions in terms of how to honor this day or to recognize this day. So again, this was being, um, can this item is being brought before the council, at council's request? And with that, based on, uh, council direction this evening, we could go back and we could prepare the appropriate action items, uh, for future date. And so with that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Ronaldo. Are there many, any members of the public who would wish to, uh, approach the podium and, um, discuss this item? Welcome, welcome, Councilmember Holly.
First of all, good evening, council. To all of you, uh, I still want my seat back. I'm just kidding. Uh, first of all, thank you. You have done an awesome job this past few years since I've been gone. I hadn't had to come back and, you know, twist nobody's ears or chew nobody out, especially Ronaldo. But anyway, on this item, I, I think it's something that is well overdue. It's been going on for years. We've celebrated several times throughout our city, uh, locally. And as you go up and down California, they're still celebrating it locally. Now it's become a federal thing to where the state, the federal government is now recognizing it. So it really would be a plus to us to honor this day, um, to recognize it as a city thing, to allow our city employees to recognize the, the benefit of being not only African Americans, but all Americans that can be benefit from this, uh, holiday. And I think it would be nice that the city put it on the agenda to get it approved. And I know it takes a process, but if we all vote together, I think we can get this done. Uh, with that, I have nothing else to say. Uh, I'll be nice to y'all and I'm gonna go sit down. Cause y'all know I could stand up to y'all all day. But thank you and I appreciate all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Holly.
Thank you.
Is anyone else would like to come to the podium?
Good evening. My name is Yvonne Neely. And I just want to speak on, um, the Juneteenth. Um, Juneteenth is a step towards freedom, reconciliation and healing. This day represents the true emancipation of enslaved people in America, not only for the enslaved people, but, but for those who enslaved them. You see, we weren't, we, they weren't free either. They needed freedom also. You, you see, we are all tied to each other. And that was by divine design that we're tied to each other. If I'm not, if you're not happy, then neither am I. Whatever affects you affects me. So a hundred fifty years, seven years later, we are still on the same road to truth, reconciliation and healing. Juneteenth, Juneteenth wasn't so much about the abolition of slavery, but, but it was about what it still is today, freedom. Freedom to belong, freedom to be included, and freedom that we all matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. And, uh, I, I'm just, I'm here in support of, um, Juneteenth. I think it would be a great thing for the city of Madera to adopt it, uh, in its full, in its entirety. Uh, the commemoration, uh, has already begun, uh, has already begun. And I think that the next step would be to make it a, a full, uh, uh, paid holiday, a holiday that could be recognized by all and celebrated by all. And this has been the intent all along, even though it hasn't been as, um, widespread. And I didn't know about Juneteenth and what it meant and what it stood for until years and years after I was out of my teens, which is really a shame. But, uh, here we are. And I think, I think it's a good thing. I think it's something that, uh, we can be, be proud of. Uh, so I would, uh, recommend that the city council adopt Juneteenth as a, uh, uh, in its entirety with, with the full, uh, recognition of, of, of other holidays that are the same. They're not the same, but this, this one is special. This is a special holiday. We need it in these times that we live now. We need something that's positive. And as we all came out this past Juneteenth, uh, it was such a wonderful, uh, uh, celebration. It was something that I think the city could all, if we all participated in it, we would all learn and grow. And I think it, it, it says a lot about the, about love, because it was, it was God that brought us to where we are now. It was his, his love that sustained us. And so as Christians, and as this nation started out as a Christian nation with ideals, I think, uh, we could include, be inclusive to all people, all religions, all races, all creeds in, in the celebration of, of, of Juneteenth. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up to the podium? The chair recognizes the chief.
Now, I'm, I'm not going to go and, and try to, just so I don't have a conflict here. What I would like to bring to the, the council's attention, Mayor, Mayor Protim and the council. Everyone sitting in the audience, uh, and Mayor Protim, I do want to thank, um, one, the special thing about th- this holiday was bringing this community together. Every one of the Juneteenth events I've attended, your police department attended, and I know I've seen all of the council attend them. And I'm not going to stand up here and say that I was well-versed or educated in what Juneteenth was or what it meant. What I will say today is that I've been enlightened. I've learned, I've been educated. Uh, I've gained an understanding, an appreciation. Um, and so is the community. Uh, one thing with your police department, we're out in the community. We talk to the community. We were one of the first departments, um, based on, uh, some of the, uh, uh, education that was performed, that actually went to a principal policing model. And we train that, and we are a principal policing organization. Um, and we, we perform classes and train our officers. And we've, we've learned a lot. And what I'd like to say is, one, this community is a loving community. We're a diverse community. Um, and it, it is time that we recognize the differences that we have and the similarities. And I just want to thank and honored to come up and speak on behalf of what Juneteenth is. And hopefully enlighten and educate some people and not the rhetoric that goes out. This is about understanding, love and acceptance. That's all this is. Uh, and I'm not, for Hilda's purposes, uh, trying to get a, a holiday. I'm just here speaking.
She gets one too.
I, I won't turn it down. I won't turn it down and my people won't, will be working. Um, but, but, but this does mean a lot to me, and I know it means a lot to the community and to the department that I do represent in this city. Um, and I've always had conversations with Pastor Neely and Stanley there, my friend. And, and the one thing that always comes up that, that I wish we all, as a society, could remember, we're all created in God's image.
Amen.
All of us. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Is there any further comments from the public? Seeing none, Alicia, do, okay, uh, come on up, you have to come up to the podium, I'm sorry. We have a microphone and this is being recorded, so everyone speaking has to come to the podium. And welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, uh, my name is Maxine Barnett. I just want to acknowledge that, uh, my mother was recognized for the first, uh, black woman of a hundred and two years old now to be recognized in the fire department and the police department and all the kids and the grandkids. They all came out for it and they were all excited about it because this had never been done for nobody like that. And so my kids, my grandkids was wondering what's going on? What, what grandma's what? You know, and that was started to bring them out. Then we had another one that was a hundred and four and brought her family and out. And this is the way it's going to get started. And this is where we're going to keep it going. And they enjoyed it to the highest. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no further comment, I'll bring it back, I'll close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for any, uh, comments themselves. Uh, councilmember Montes.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, everybody, for speaking. Um, and, uh, I want to make some commentary, and it's not speaking on the merit of the day itself. It's more, um, in line with the processes that we have. Uh, and taking into account the roles that I've had with the city. What we're asking today is something that we usually, uh, take back to our bargaining units at an appropriate time. Um, and they're the ones that are going to be the most impacted by this because there is, um, I know, Councilmember Holly, you know, I think you were on the bargaining team, uh, for a while. So there is, I don't want to say a back and forth, but there is, um, costs associated with that and, um, and as well as other opportunities that we're not going to be able to do. So we take this back to the people that are going to be most impacted. This is, and this is what I would, um, propose. I would move that we table this today, go back to the bargaining at the appropriate time, ask them, uh, what they would want to do, uh, because they do get input in this. Um, and then come back with, uh, the fiscal impact. Because again, there's nothing to say, nothing to say about the merits of the day. I think, you know, we've made proclamations on that for the last couple of years when we've had, uh, events. Um, so again, but what we're asking for today, and, and as I understand this, um, staff report, is, it's going to impact the employees the most. So I would feel more comfortable if they would come. And, and I haven't received any, any phone calls from them. I was a former president of one of the bargaining associations. And I haven't received any calls from them. So I would have appreciated it, um, to have been reached out to, um, and have an opportunity to take it back to my members. Because as a president, no matter what decisions you make, uh, there's always somebody that's going to say, hey, this is the wrong thing, or this is, I wanted to do something different. So giving them the opportunity to weigh in on it is what I think that we should do. Again, has nothing to do with the merits. I think this is, this is a good thing. I think that, um, you know, everything that we have in the city has done is, is a beautiful thing, right? Uh, but again, just respecting the process for me, uh, again, and coming back with some financials on it because there was, depending on what we did today, there was no financial impact on it. And that's another, uh, part of the decision-making process that, that we have to take into consideration. And we just raised, uh, rates about a month ago. Uh, salaries and benefits are one of the biggest expenditures that we have. And we had that on our, um, our budget, um, workshop today. Um, so we have to take that into consideration. I got a lot of calls last month when we were proposing to raise the rates. And we're, the next month, we're proposing to, uh, cut services without consulting those that are going to be impacted. I think that, that would be wise on our part to take that back to the bargaining groups and then come back after, um, we've, uh, bargained with them or negotiated with them. And that's my comment.
Thank you for that. Councilwoman Gallegos.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. I'd like to thank everybody to come, for coming out tonight and tell you that I'm a big supporter of Juneteenth, and I am also a member of NAACP. I think this is a great opportunity for our city to go forward and show other cities and counties around us that this is an important holiday to take. But if you know me well, I've sat on this dais for six years and I have watched every penny go through this city and made sure that we're responsible for it. Um, I represent, I feel the whole city, not just a district that votes for me to be sitting here. And with that, I fiscally don't feel that I can motion and second and say yes to this without looking at the fiscal impact it's going to make, because those are taxpayer dollars that we will be paying our employees to be off on this day, which I don't think it should be a dollar amount. But if you know me, they, they corner me in Save Mart, they corner me in Walmart, they corner me out at the ball field. I get cornered left and right on issues when it comes to money. And, and I'm always saying, it's not about the dollars. It's about the kids, or, you know, it's not about the dollars. It's about the land space that we need for parks. I am constantly out in the public. I'm a school teacher, so I'm, I'm doing crosswalk and people are following me across the crosswalk, back and forth, telling me stuff. Um, and, and I, I got it with, when we were raising sewer rates. And I'm trying to tell people, we haven't raised them in a couple of decades. I mean, I am, I feel defending, um, what we do here, which is very difficult and making decisions that impacts everyone in the city. And so, um, with that, I'm, I am going to have to, um, be with, um, Councilman Montes on tabling it till we go and find out the fiscal responsibilities, talk to the bargaining units, um, and go from there. I'm also in the bargaining unit for Madera Unified, so I get it. You, I, I wish we could just make decisions and we go for it and we go forward. I've learned in government, it doesn't work like that. Government works very slow. It's a process. If you want something done, it takes months to get it done. And being in this the longest, I've had to learn to really just sit on my hands, which is difficult because I will stay up all night or day and night for weeks, whatever it would take to get done, but that's not the case there. So, um, I just wanted to let you know where I'm coming from and being the, the elected here and the, um, the leadership that I've been given to make that decision. That's where, uh, my, my heart has to go because I do represent this community and my constituents. Thank you, Mayor Garcia.
Thank you. Um, Mayor Protim Evans.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank each and every one of you for coming out tonight and to recognize Juneteenth as what it is. I understand my colleagues, but I do understand slavery. I am the granddaughter of a slave. And her master was who fathered thirteen children by her. None of us were documented. They worked, they fought, they died. I understand the politics of it, but President Biden signed it into office to be able to have the banks, the schools, the post office, all financial institutes to be able to be closed. I understand the bargaining units. I understand all of that. But if you've never been black, you don't understand. I understand what it is to go across the border. I've been across the border. I was raised by Hispanic. Lady Mama Jenny, but my mother and father were both black and white. It's not easy. It's not easy. And for us to be able to move forward, sure, we can take it back to the bargaining unit, but at the end of the day, we celebrate Columbus Day. Before Columbus came, there were Indians, there were Mexicans, there were Africans. They were here, but we celebrate that day. We celebrate Black Friday. Go back and look and see what Black Friday means. It's the day of slaves, but we celebrate it and we get it paid and we're off. But now it's Juneteenth and we can But now it's Juneteenth and we can celebrate the day that slaves were sold. But we can't celebrate the day and can't recognize and can't be off the day that we were freed. So I understand, I understand the government, I understand the bargaining units, but I'm asking, let's take it there. I'm in four, I'm four. Placing Juneteenth as a day that we all have off, that we all celebrate. Because if I cut you, I cut you, I cut you, we all bleed the same thing. We all are a child of God. And I sit here now and my heart is racing. And as I said, if you've never been black, you never understand. You've never asked to been, to step off the sidewalk when you go in the grocery store because you're not the right color. You've never been told to go to the back of the restaurant and pick up your food because you're black. You've never been spat on before. You've never been disrespected and called things that nobody in this room would ever want to be called. It hurts and to be put a price tag on us and to be sold. You may as well prostitute yourself, because that's what they did to us. To be raped 13 times and give 13 babies to somebody that wasn't your husband and your husband was sent out into the fields to work. That's the life that I came from. And that's where I'm at now. So I come to each of you and I just ask, if it was you and if it was your family, what'd you do? How would you feel? And I rest my case.
Thank you. Any further comments from my colleagues? If not, I will make my own comments. Go ahead, Mr. Rodriguez, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand raised.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mayor Garcia. I, I too wanted to thank the folks that came up and spoke alongside our mayor Protem. Very touching words. You know, I, I too, like Chief, was very touched by the ceremony that we attended. And I wanted to thank Mayor Protem for, for having me to be partaking in that. You know, I, I will say Stanley plays a mean trumpet and I, I'm not sure what, what the name of that trumpet is Stanley, but that was a really good, really good way of starting our ceremony. But anyhow, you know, I'm certainly in favor of continuing the celebration of this, of this great moment in time and to continue to, to, to expand on it and educate. As you said, Mayor Protem and Chief Lawson, it's, it's, it's an opportunity for us to educate our, our, our community and celebrate that freedom that we, we talk about. I certainly was very inspired by the ceremony, carrying those chains and then burning them alongside the words that were given to us. And quite frankly, it was, it was chilling because it, it really had an impact in the way I, I looked at Juneteenth. And again, this is from someone that in history and in school, the, the, this moment in time wasn't really something that I've learned or that I really explored more than what I did during that, that time at the ceremony. So like the, like the Old Timbers Day Parade that's coming by, I would like to see this as a, as a, as a, an event that we, we hold traditionally every year and we go through these moments of, of, again, teaching and ceremonies and what have you. And with that, you know, I want to be sensitive to all of those folks that are here. At the same time, I, I too want to be sensitive to the, the other folks that may be impacted and how that, that plays a part. I know, I don't want to put a price on it either, that's not what I really want to say, but I certainly want to have them at the table as well and, and making sure that this is something that they too would, would agree. And, and when I say they, I, I mean the employees and the bargaining units. If that is something that we're all in accordance, then I don't see why we can't. I know we sit on a dais here and a lot of the times when we make decisions over what, what days and what not and what hours and what benefits, they're, they're at the table as well. As much as I want to dictate how I should be able to run a city, that's not how it works, because you have to have them at the table. You have to be able to compromise and confer and, you know, there's certain things with bargaining. So I, without fairness, I, I'd like to at least give that an attempt to see what their feedback is. I certainly don't want to take away anything from the actual day and even recognize it even further and possibly, and make it similar to what we do for the Old Timbers Day Parade or any other traditional day that we have and we, when we celebrate. I, I certainly want to see that grow and expand. And, and in any way that we can do that, that'd be great, but I certainly want to have the feedback of the other folks that may be impacted as well. And those are my comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you again for all those that spoke. I couldn't really see your faces, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. So I wanted to give my opinion on this because I feel it's very, very important to me personally. I am support, I am in 100% support of making this a paid holiday for the employees of the city of Madera. I would not want to take any holiday away from a bargaining unit that exists right now. I would not want to say, well, we'll take this and we'll give you this and we'll call it a wash. I'd rather have a, this be an effort on our part to recognize Juneteenth as a holiday for the Madera employees. Having said that, the item under our, our agenda, it says, looking for direction. Let me go back to that. Brought for consideration and direction at the request of the city council. So my question is, do we have an idea of what a paid holiday would cost to the city of Madera?
Can we can calculate that relatively quickly, Mayor? I, I don't have those numbers in front of me. I'm, I'm going to look to Wendy to see if she can work her magic, but I don't want to be unreasonable either. We, we have not approached the employees groups yet. The city of Madera does have four labor groups, simply because we didn't want to overstep our, our boundaries or any boundaries at the council. I simply didn't want to put council in a compromised position. However, if the direction this evening is to approach the kind of labor groups, we would happily can do so immediately. That's, can that's, I think it's going to be a relatively easy process. I don't want to speculate and hopefully I'm not speaking out of turn. But can Wendy, is there, am I asking for too much to, it's pretty difficult to calculate that. I, I take it in 30 seconds.
And Wendy, please don't feel that you have to respond.
No, I'm not. No, because there's certain, could, could you take, you could take your total budgeted salary benefits divided by 20, 2080 and you'll get close, but it's not, i- if you've been in close session with me and numbers, I like to be really accurate. So I, I'd rather bring it back to you.
Yeah, and I, and I agree. I think it's very easily done that by our next city councilman. Meaning we can agendize this item, very easily do this, and we can come back and get some firm numbers. I'm not really concerned regarding the bargaining unit employees, because getting an additional paid holiday, I don't think that they would have a problem with. I think that if we were going to remove a holiday, I think that would be a problem. And so, yes, if, I, I agree, and I've already made my opinion known that I, I would like to personally see this as a paid holiday for the city employees. But I agree that we can table this, we can bring it back in two weeks and we can have another discussion. So is there a motion and a second?
Do you need a motion?
Or do you, or just four thumbs up?
So for clarification, so the motion right now, as I understand it, is to approach the labor groups and have staff do some calculations to get some cost estimates. Is that appropriate? And I'm going to look to Hilda to make sure that.
And to come back.
Right, and to come back.
Yeah, I think that's what I heard as well. Mr. Rodriguez, the only concern might be the timeframe. Not forgetting the numbers, definitely she can get it, Wendy can get the numbers in two weeks, but approaching all the unions within the two-week period. So at the next meeting or as soon as possible.
Correct. Our next meeting.
Yeah, there's no meeting in two weeks.
Yes, thank you. We have a special meeting next week. Our meeting after that will be September the 21st. Does that sound about right?
Okay, next meeting then.
Yeah, September the 21st.
Because we're out of town the 7th.
Correct. So it's about a month from now roughly.
21st.
Yeah, so I suspect that should be adequate, but.
Okay, all right. So we're good, Hilda? With a thumbs up or you want a motion?
I think, I think we have direction.
Councilwoman Rodriguez has another question.
Did you have another question, Mr. Rodriguez?
I, I just want to make sure you, you had finished up with the motion, but Hilda did clarify what we are requesting. So I just want to confirm that, that was clear. Thank you, Hilda.
And this is for a paid holiday? That's what I'm talking about.
No, the direction was to just go back to the bargaining units and, and then bring, and bring back the financial information. There was no consensus of whether it's paid or not paid at this point, or whether there's a different scenario, like taking Columbus Day out and substituting this in, so.
No, I'm, I'm not saying that we need to take Columbus Day out. I just made the, the mention of the fact of we celebrate Columbus Day.
Right, no, I understand, but that is definitely a holiday that a lot of people don't like. So let's just say that. So, so there was consensus on getting the financial information and there was consensus on going back to the union. But I did not hear consensus. I did not hear four of you say that you want a paid holiday.
Well, I'm up for the paid holiday.
So I, I think we were making our points as to that's what we were looking for is a paid holiday. I was, I did not say I'm making a motion to remove a holiday. And that's why the question of, of with the bargaining units, we're not, as far as I, I don't have your consensus here, taking anyone saying remove a holiday.
No.
So what my motion was that we get the financials and then we approach the bargaining units to start talking about that. Because there, I mean, let's be honest, at the end of the day, there is going to be a cost. And we need to know that before we start saying we're going to do this or that. We need to find that out and talk to the bargaining units to, to see what their opinion of it is, and then we can move forward from there.
Like, I'll, I'll second that motion.
Like normal. I think we had Councilwoman Gallegos second that. So it's really, we don't need a motion, but I agree that that would be the consensus. Take it back to the bargain unit and then we'll get to finance.
And the financials would be at that point in time, then it'll be determined if it can be a paid holiday for everyone.
We can have that discussion at that time.
It'll be on the agenda and then we could have a motion and to that effect, yes.
Okay, all right then.
Okay, thank you very much, Council.
Okay, thank you very much.
Motion in a second. Do you need your roll call?
I don't think she said, she said direction.
Well, but then there was confusion, so there was, subsequent to that, there was a motion in a second.
So you need to vote?
Yes.
Okay. Alicia.
So we have two different subjects then? Okay.
Alicia, would you call the roll, please?
So the motion, I believe, was by Councilmember Montes, and I believe the second was by Councilmember Rodriguez.
Councilmember Gallegos? Yes. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes? Mayor Protem Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Mejia?
Yes.
Councilmember Villegas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We'll be re-rating that agendized item in the future. We now move on to, thank you very much, Wendy. To item F, Councilmember Reports Announcements for Future Agenda Items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for the mayor and councilmembers to make brief reports on boards, committees and other public agencies and at public events, to request updates, to initiate future agenda items and to take actions on matters initiated under this section of the agenda. Under this section, the council may take action only on items specifically agendized and which meet other requirements for action. Councilmember Gallegos.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. First, I'd like to thank our staff for getting all the numbers to complete that 2021 audit. I know it's not easy and putting that together for the PUN group to come up with that information to present it to us. So I appreciate all that time that was put into that. We also had a dedication this week on Almond Park, thanks, thanks to Joseph Crown and his development who donated that park space for us, so that is a plus. Last, I would like to ask my colleagues to put on the agenda a discussion to naming Olive and Knox Park, Talbert Park. And if they could please, if they agree to this, make it a surprise and kind of leave it in the house, because that would be kind of nice. We got, we got Mr. Talbert not watching, so that would be really nice if we can surprise him with that, because if you know Jim, he doesn't like recognition. He doesn't like the spotlight, because he does what he does, because that's who he is. So I just need to get either a thumbs up if you are willing to have discussion about that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
I have nothing to report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Montes.
I also have nothing to report.
Mayor Protem Evans?
Yes, first I want to say thank you to everyone that was here. Thank you to my colleagues for just listening to me, and I know I became emotional, but this is an emotional thing for me. Also, I want to thank Joseph Hubert for the water faucet at McNally Park and to all the public works and to everyone that worked on that. So I don't know if you've all seen it or not, but McNally Park does have a new water faucet with the little, the little doggy thing. And I can't wait to take my puppy, Ms. Bella, there so she can drink out of it and everything. I want to thank you for that. Thank you also, Mr. Crown, and everyone that worked on the park for yesterday, I mean, for, was it yesterday, day before yesterday, for the ribbon cutting ceremony? That was awesome. Arnaldo, thank you for all the work that you do here. Alicia, thank you for the staff, thank you, and for each and every one of us that come and do the things that we do. Thank you, guys. I love you, guys. And to the chief, boy, you are something else. Where's Chief Watson? There he is. Thank you. Jacob told me to tell you, hey, and he's going to be here in June of next year and he's ready to go to work. So that's my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, lady.
Oh, one more thing. I'm so sorry.
No, no, no.
No, please, can I, please, please, please.
We got our night.
Stop it. I was at Town and Country Park the other day and I was walking, which I really need to do, but a young lady fell in front of me and there was big potholes. And she fell, she broke her elbow. And she had to be rushed to the hospital. So I thank the staff from the police that came out and stayed there the entire time, the EMTs and everyone that came. But the city came and put dirt in the, in the holes real quick. I called Arnaldo and they were out there. But Town and Country Park is a beautiful park and we really do need to put some money in it, because that walkway out there is not the best. And I'm old and if I fall, I might not be here in this seat anymore. You guys might be happy, but anyway, we need to get it fixed. So that, now that's my report, so I'm done. Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much for that, Councilwoman Mejia.
This weekend, I had the opportunity to join farm workers marching from La Grande. No, I'm sorry, from Fermi to La Grande. It was very powerful to see the show of solidarity from Madera, from Chauchilla, from La Grande for farm workers. Also, I, a big shout out to city staff for providing a nice space, clean space for farm workers to hold their rally and rest. They are going to be reaching Sacramento. Their plan to be there at 9:00 AM on the 26th of August, so anybody that could go out and support. They're also still taking donations to UFW to keep this march going. As you know, it takes a lot. It takes water, food and housing and a lot more to keep it going and marching for the governor's signature. I also had the opportunity. I also had the opportunity to attend the first ever forum on Indigenous communities that was hosted by the Madera Community College. It was a great event. There were a lot of people, there are a lot of organizations and resources, and they lifted up the issues that are affecting a lot of our residents, including language access, access to services, and a path to higher education. So I was very fortunate to be a part of that and enjoy the music, the all the things that they provided. That was very nice, and I think that this is, these are great conversations. I would also like to congratulate El Consulado de México because they are the ones that organized it. And there were a lot of sponsors. I can't remember all of them right now, but I know that there was, like I said, the Madera Community College, there was Volares. And it was great to be a part of that. With that being said, I would ask my colleagues if we can support getting a proclamation for upcoming Indigenous Day on October twelfth. I think that as part of lifting these issues that our communities face, I think it would be a good day to recognize the residents in our community that are from, that are Indigenous like myself. I know that in the Central Valley, there are at least three hundred thousand Indigenous people. And there was also an informal census done here in Madera where that was more than ten years ago, and there were at least two thousand people. So I'm sure there are a lot more of us now. And that's all I have to report. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, absolutely. After the last census, I think it's a larger number. Yeah.
There was consensus to put the.
Their consensus on, yes, yeah, I was assuming that for sure. Councilmember Villegas?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor Santa Garcia. I have two, two. One good news and one bad news. The bad news is about this farm worker have an collision with somebody else, and and this farm worker live on La Perla and La Fresa, right in the side. Two houses where I live, and the highway patrol looked for the person because they're runaway. And just today afternoon, I find out this is the person collision with the one, the runaway. This person had die, they die. So that's the bad news. The good news is that I attend City College fifteen minutes before twelve to the to see the what's going to happen. There were the in the last ten to be selected for the million dollars, so. And I was there and everybody cheering and everything, so we wasted an awesome. And they would come out with City College, Madera City College got the million dollars, so I become first. And that's a good thing. And that's my report.
Very good.
Thank you very much for that. I, I too would like to echo Councilmember Mejia's thank gratefulness to the city of Madera and the Madera City Council for allowing us to host the United Farm Workers as they go to Sacramento looking for their voting rights, absentee voting rights for their, for their, for their members. Also, President Emeritus, Arturo Rodriguez from the United Farm Workers is an old friend of mine. I met him back in somewhere around the nineteen ninety. And he graciously accepted our invitation to come and to our home, and he came and had dinner, and we smoked a cigar in the front porch. And we also had a glass of wine, but we won't go into that. So it was a very pleasant evening for the, for the end of the day. Also, today, I had the honor of wishing Mary Cloud a happy one, one hundred year old, happy birthday at Cedar Creek. They had a big cake for her. Her family was there, and they're very happy to receive the certificate and recognizing for her, for her longevity and and good life. And second thing, at the end of the day today, before we came to the city council chambers, city council meeting, some of us from the city council attended the Camarena semi ribbon cutting at, on Almond Avenue. It's a beautiful facility. They have pediatrics, they have vision, they have adult care, they have urgent care. It's a beautiful, brand new facility. City health resource for the city of Madera. They've been here quite a long time. My wife and I used the little tiny clinic at the, on Sixth street for healthcare way back in the day. And so I really appreciate Camarena's help in in Madera and Madera County in providing us with really, really good healthcare. And so that's my report for tonight.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes, sir.
If I may, I'm sorry. Earlier, Mayor Protem Evans made some concerns about Town and Country, and she also had requested that that be fixed. So I wasn't sure if she was requesting some consensus to add that to a future agenda item, but I certainly would, would, I would certainly support that. As that's been something that has been dear, not only to me, but a lot of the constituency around our community. So I wasn't sure if Mayor Protem was requesting to to get that on a future item that we can discuss. Just wanted to clarify that because I had my thumb up, but I don't know if you saw that.
Councilman Rodriguez, I think Arnoldo can kind of expand on that because I think we've applied for a grant for the trail.
Yes, and again, I don't want to go too, too far into the discussion. Those grants have been, we've been applying for years, but I wasn't sure if that was an urgent because of the, the, the concern with the pedestrian there or the person that was walking.
I think you can bring back, if there's consensus, bring it back, and then he can report on grants and other things that are in the pipeline.
Okay. Okay, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Yeah.
We will now move on to item G, closed session. Hilda, would you take us into item G one, liability? Go ahead and read that part.
Yes, fair. It's liability claimant or government code section five four nine five six point nine five, agency claimed against city of Madera. Claimant is Brian Mata.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for attending who have been here. Thank you very much, and you all have a good night. We are now back from closed session. Hilda, would you please bring us back?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council met in closed session and considered a request to file a late claim by Brian Mata who experienced, who was involved in an incident concerning a high wind event which resulted in him getting struck with a tree branch. The council voted 7-0 to deny the late claim application.
Thank you very much for that. This meeting is now adjourned. It is now 10:04.